Meeting Tuesday, August 6, 2019, we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation from Pastor Boyd, Chaplain Boyd, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chapel Boyd, if you would, please.
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless us this evening, Heavenly Father, and ask that you give us some understanding, Heavenly Father, and just bless us as we have this meeting, Heavenly Father, and let us be on one accord, Heavenly Father, and let us respect each and every one's decision, Heavenly Father. And we just ask that you continue to show us grace and mercy each and every day. These men are blessed, so we ask in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much for being here for the first time.
Thank you.
Sorry you were confused about the location, but thank you for doing that for us. We appreciate it. All right, thank you, everyone. If you would, make sure your phones are on silent, please. And we will move into the remainder of the agenda, which is approval of the official agenda, including consent items. Do we have any changes that would like to be made to the agenda? Alderman, Walker.
Mayor, I'd like to propose, under item number 10, Board Business D, move that to Consent.
Item number 10D, as in the government consultants?
Yes.
Okay. Any objections to moving number 10D to Consent? Seeing none, we'll place that one on Consent.
Mayor, I'd also like-
Objection. Oh, you do object? Okay, I'm sorry. There's an objection.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to move item 10C to Consent.
Okay. 10C, is there an objection to 10C?
I object, Mayor.
All right.
Mayor, I would like to take item number 9A.
9A, okay.
And I would like to move that following item, make that item number C under Department Business.
Item C under Department Business, so move it to where courts is, basically?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any objection to moving that particular item under Mayor's Business to C under what would be Department Business? Okay, no objection, then we will consider that move. That would be item 9A, move to C under Department Business, which is 11C. Okay? Any other changes?
No.
All right. Anyone else have any changes to the agenda or the consent agenda? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the official agenda with the consent changes? I have a motion from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman sits strong. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. I will read the consent agenda items at this time. Item four, under the Board of Alderman Minutes, we have consideration of the minutes of the July 2, 2019, regular meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the July 18, 2019, special call meeting of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the July 26, 2019, budget work session of the Mayor and the Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. On page three, we have consideration of calling for the first public hearing on the 2019-2020 budget for the City of Starkville to be held on August 20, 2019, meeting. Under Airport, we've got request authorization for Airport Director Rodney Lincoln to travel to Jackson, Mississippi, to attend a Mississippi Airport Association Board of Directors meeting on August 15, 2019. Under Finance Administration, we have number two, request authorization for the City Clerk's Office to advertise for source of supply for the streets, sanitation, and parks and recreation departments, general city, for the period of October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020.
Excuse me, ma'am. Could you go back to consideration of setting the public here? Because the doc has said one thing, and she said another thing, so they're saying two different things.
For the first public hearing on the City of Starkville to be held August 20, 2019?
Yes, ma'am. Inside, I can see in consideration of the settlement of the public hearing on the tax millage and budget, but our doc is saying something different. It kind of misleading to the public, I think.
I'm sorry, okay. And the language-
Is it taxing?
Tax and millage? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, let me do a sort of a reread. Consideration of calling for the first public hearing on the tax and millage for the 2019-2020 budget for the City of Starkville to be held on August 20, 2019, meeting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Under Human Resources, we have number one, request authorization to hire Jared Thornton as a part-time athletic assistant in the Parks and Recreation Department. Number two is request authorization to hire Javion Mobley as a seasonal maintenance worker assigned to the Street Department. Number three is request authorization to hire Amy Counterman as a temporary full-time code enforcement officer in the Community Development Department. Number four is request authorization to advertise for a civil engineer intern in the Engineering Department. Number five is request authorization to advertise for two water treatment operators in Starkville Utilities Department. And number six is request authorization to advertise for maintenance workers in the Sanitation Environmental Services Department. Under Parks, one is consideration of the approval of the Facility Use Agreement with the Starkville Academy for use of an athletic field for their varsity girls and boys soccer programs. Under Police Department, one is consideration to enter into the grant agreement with the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety concerning grant number PT-2020-PT-23-11, which is the Police Training Safety Grant for fiscal year 20 in the amount of $15,300 to provide for overtime enforcement in the areas of traffic law enforcement. Number two is consideration to enter into the grant agreement with the Mississippi Office of Highway Safety concerning grant number M5X-2020-MD-23-11, which is the DUI enforcement grant for fiscal year 20 in the amount of $81,100, which provides two full-time DUI enforcement officers, as well as overtime enforcement in the areas of alcohol and drug driving arrests. K is Sanitation Department. One, transfer a 1993 Ford F-250 from Starkville Utilities to Environmental Services. Declare the F-250 VIN number 1FTHF25H7PNB10598 as surplus property. Advertise for sale to the highest bidder and purchase a 2019 Dodge Ram 1500 Crew Cab Truck, State Contract number 070-4852311, at a cost of $23,935. Under the Utilities Department, number one is request authorization to advertise for bids for 161 KV power circuit breakers, 69 KV power circuit breakers, and 15 KV vacuum circuit breakers, material only, for the Southwest Starkville Primary Substation. Number two is request authorization to advertise for bids for the Ernest E. Jones Wastewater Treatment Plant Bio-Solids Improvements. Number three is request approval of the lowest and best quote from the Electric Motor Sales and Service Inc. for the replacement of a pump at the wastewater plant in the amount of $49,427. And number four is request approval of the lowest and best quote from Ken's Tree Service for the removal of six trees and stump grinding in the Pleasant Acres neighborhood in the amount of $5,975. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
My pleasure. Thank you. All right. Next, we have announcements and comments, and my only comment right now is associated with the National Night Out, which occurs this Thursday from 7:00 to 10:00. Chief, would you like to come give us just a little bit of what's going on? I know backpacks, but you're much more familiar with it than I am.
Greetings, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board. National Night Out is a national day of pretty much peace that was started several years ago. We adopted the program in approximately 2016. I think this is probably our third or fourth year doing it. And pretty much it's where we invite the community to all come together and fellowship, and we have different people there giving away backpacks, food supplies, and such for children. So everything there has to be free. Nothing can be sold that day. So, of course, there's hot dogs, hamburgers, and other foods that would be given away on that day. So I asked that the community to come out. Last year, I think we had about 300 people there. I'd like to double that because we had plenty of food left.
Okay, and it's at the sportsplex?
It is at the sportsplex.
And hours are 7:00 to 10:00, right?
7:00 to 10:00.
Thursday.
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 It's usually held on the first Tuesday in August, but because of the election, we -- the sportsplex is already booked, so we decided to move it to Thursday. And it also can be celebrated for some of the hotter states, they celebrate it the first Tuesday in October.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it. It's a wonderful event, so I look forward to being there. All right, anything from Board of Alderman? Any comments from the Board of Alderman? Okay, seeing none, we will move to citizens' comments. This is an opportunity when everyone can speak for three minutes. This is not give and take with the Board, unless the Board chooses to respond in some kind of way. This is strictly you guys giving us input, so.
Greetings, men. Boardman, name is Alton Ward, 7.
Good evening, Mr. Turner.
To the mayor and to the police for our safety. I was born with grand mon seizures, and I want to thank the mayor for helping reprogram me after the incident that happened. Told me everything that happened. I don't remember falling or nothing else, but I appreciate that, Mayor, for helping me reprogram myself. Because the quicker that I can get myself organized, I can get back to doing, you know, it's no cure for it, but I can live with it. But thank you much for that. Sales and work. I used my last garbage bag on today, so I guess I go by store tonight, and I don't know how long the people be buying bags until whatever. We got a situation on Highway 12 that is scary. Around 7:30 PM, we have people on a drag race on strips from the new sprint mark, and they've been catch the lights at Viles and catch the light at Walgreen. They just come through wide open. And we getting to the time of year now that it can be real congested, and we just want to bring to attention of what's been happening around that time of evening. They feel like there are no police around, and I agree, we'd be playing with death like that. And we have already had two buses to get hit. People are not paying attention to what they're doing, and the kind of shook up the drivers, but would be, and people need to kind of take notice of what you're doing. You cannot be on the phone drive, and that gets some concerns upstairs.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone? All right, Chief, yes, if you'd like to address that, that'd be fine.
Once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Board, we've definitely had complaints about that. I've had other complaints, and we do have people out there watching. We did stop a couple cars about a week and a half ago. As a matter of fact, the last board meeting we had, on my way home, I stopped one. I read a Mustang. So it's definitely happening, but we are aware of it, and we do have people out there looking for it.
Did the cameras help at all?
We hadn't used the cameras that I know of, but definitely they helped.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chief, there's a lot going on in all the community. With de-race cars, de-charges, I mean, most things, it's all over the community, it's all over town.
Yeah.
Especially on Sunday evenings, a lot.
Because I did have a complaint on Carver Drive, and Officer White lives out there, so he has a police car, and he's taking care of it on Carver Drive. But you're absolutely right, we've had a whole bunch of complaints about that throughout a lot of the neighborhoods, and of course, we've talked about it in long metal. So it's definitely happening.
Okay, all right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else, citizens' comments?
My name is John Tolliver, Ward 6. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, Chief. It also happens over in Rolling Hills, too. They racing Rolling Hills also. I just wanted to let you know that. I'm glad to come before you and say that even though our house is not finished, we're not paying rent anymore. We're back in our homes. And why am I telling you this? Because I come to find out quite a few people watch this, so I want to thank everybody that gave dimes and nickels or prayers or whatever that they did. I'm very grateful to them for the encouragement to hold on and all of those things. I do have a problem with being lied on. I really do. And the last time, the last meeting, I was lied on from a piece of paper. I was lied on, but no one knew that there was a lie but me, because I know the truth. But the truth of the matter is, the only thing that was truly said is, we did refuse the money because it was not enough money to get done what was needed to be done. Now, the annexation, I'm still wondering about that, because Mississippi State has its own post office. Mississippi State has its own police station. So if it has a post office, it's pretty much at least a township. So it would be harder to annex Mississippi State. But the people that live around Mississippi State would be more citizens to Mississippi State, Mississippi, than they would Starkville, Mississippi. Because Mississippi State is the dividing line. So those people who live in that area, they live in Mississippi State, Mississippi, even though they may have a 39759. But because Mississippi State has its own zip code, it's a city within itself. So you're not going to go after Mississippi State, because Mississippi State has the finances to fight the City of Starkville for takeover. And, but I don't understand how you can annex that area without annexing Mississippi State.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else under citizens' comments? Anyone else?
Again, I'm Wyatt Frysock. I'm in the proposed annexation area, and I wanted to talk a little bit again about the way the City of Starkville operates. As you know, the sidewalks-to-nowhere program has no realistic approach to it. The inspectors have no reality. That's one of the things. I noticed the new 100-year flood plan you're looking at is going to significantly impact some areas. There's already federal flood maps. If you go by the federal flood maps and build a foot above that, don't build in the floodways, you're pretty good shape. If you build where you can get flood insurance, so what if it floods out? You can get it compensated. That's better than effectively taking the whole city down. That's what the flood insurance is for. Or you can go to a city of stilts, like they do on the coast. The interesting thing I noticed in your agenda here with Mr. Pilkington, a swing set that's been there for many years is now an illegal structure. Come on, guys. Somebody ought to have some reality. That swing set's been there as long as I can remember, but now it's an illegal structure. So that's, you know, things could be done better, and people wouldn't object so much to potentially being taken into it. The, all of these special requirements, I don't know if you noticed, Dr. Ben Carson about a week ago, he has pointed out that all of these neat little things the cities across the counties across the U.S. are doing is basically eliminating affordable housing. If you're a professor at Mississippi State, you're in good shape in Starkville in housing. If you're in Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Perkins constituents, many of them cannot afford that level of housing. Again, the $12,000 for sidewalks for the two homes that people put their money in, their labor to build, for the habitat for humanity. There's a lot of things the city's doing that's probably good, but it significantly impacts the cost of doing things and building things. That's not really good for anybody in the long term.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak under citizens' comments? Not till you get to the microphone.
Mayor, order people. My name is Sally Loughlin, 257 Lakewood Drive, Shealy Hills, Starkville, Mississippi. I made a little schematic. I asked Mr. Carver if we actually could put up the map on the screen. I don't want to be annexed, and that's it. I see no benefit to me. I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income who will now have more taxes to pay. I have dogs. I have a nice fenced yard who will have to be registered, so that will be another expense for me. Today was my garbage day. I love my garbage man, Mr. Ware, no offense to you. I have a nice rolling can that I roll out to the street. I'm the fourth oldest person in the neighborhood. Nobody will beat Ms. Wilson at 104, or is it 3? But, and my garbage man roll my can back into my carport. Now, I'm not disabled, but I do appreciate that service that they have rendered to me. Mr. Carver, you didn't mention, it was I read in the newspaper, that you were so happy to have the 182 entrance into Starkville, Mississippi. I've lived in Shealy Hills for 17 years. We now have a nice stoplight at 182 and East Lee Boulevard, because 27 buses are going to be coming out of that school and making a turn there. But in the 17 years that I have been there, I have sat for minutes on end while cars pulled into Mississippi State University. I don't have any facts, statistics, or anything like that. I can't tell you one out of 10 went to Starkville, or one out of 10 went to Mississippi State, but a whole bunch of them go to Mississippi State University. Truthfully, I just cannot see how this is a good fit for Starkville. I taught government for many years. To me, you have gerrymandered part of the county to fit into the Starkville Municipal District. If you look at the map, which I've got on my phone, but I don't, it'll do any good for you here, and you look at the new annexation, where it comes off of 182, coming into Starkville, I actually went out to try to prove to myself that it didn't even say Starkville on the street sign, but it does. I wanted it just to say Mississippi State University, but it says Starkville. But if you look at that map, that gerrymandered to me, which in all the years that I taught, was not a good thing, you will see- May I walk over to the map?
Sure.
My pleasure.
Well, you know I can't do that.
Ms. Loughlin, you've got like seven seconds.
Here we come, right here. Mississippi State, Mississippi State, Mississippi State. Little part of Shealy Hills even belongs to Mississippi State University, and I don't know why you decided to do there.
Yes, ma'am. Your three minutes are up, but you'll have another chance at a public speaking.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? All right. I'm going to close it as a public, I'm going to close citizens' comments, not as a public hearing, sorry. I'm going to close citizens' comments, and we will move to the public appearance. We have a public appearance by Brenda Magah, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Magah, okay, thank you. And she is going to be talking about the 2020 Census Partnership. And I believe we have a brochure in front of us.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Board.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening on behalf of the Census Bureau.
Sure.
The Census is coming up April 1, 2020. We at the Census Bureau want to count everyone once and only once where they live. And in order to be able to do that, we need trusted voices like yourself to assist us in getting everyone educated and informed about the census coming up. We know that the census numbers have an effect on the reappraisal of funds that go to the state, also on redistricting, as well as having an effect on many other things in the community. So the numbers from the Census Bureau are very important. We have to present those numbers to the President December 31 of 2020. That will then determine the distribution. It also affects our representatives in Congress, our representation. In 2000, Mississippi had five representatives. 2010, we went down to four. And that was due to the count that came from the 2000 Census. So what does that mean? It means that we need those trusted voices to help us get the word out, to go out in the community. And we ask that the Board would vote on a complete count committee. And what a complete count committee is comprised of, is comprised of those trusted voices in the community that know their community, know any obstacles that stand in the way of getting that complete count. They develop a plan, and they execute that plan. And if the Board votes on that, and votes on a proclamation stating that they are going to form a complete count committee, what the Board could do is, two constituents from each ward be on that board. That can be faith-based, anyone from the faith-based community, the healthcare community, someone down at the post office, someone at the, from the garbage department, someone that's trusted, that the constituents in the community, they see on a regular basis, so they know these individuals, and that you can help us get that word out. In 2000, only 67% of respondents responded to the Census questionnaire in the City of Starkville. In 2010, 69% responded. You have, we have what we call an ACS, American Community Survey. That survey is an ongoing survey from the Census Bureau every single year. In October, County, only 41.2% responded. That's an indicator of how many will respond to the 2020 Census. So if only 41.2% responded, then we need those trusted voices to help get that count up. And in noticing, one thing that affects that is that there's a lot of renters, and there's 45.5% renters in the area. And there are also 51.8% of the house- And there are also 51.8% of the households that have children under the age of 18. And in 2010, over a million children under the age of five were not counted in the United States. That affected our kindergarten programs, our Head Start programs, our SNAP benefits, and our WEE programs, knowing that we didn't have those children that were not counted. In 2020, the census and all, you have a lot of information in your packets. I'm not going through every sheet. I know I don't have time for that. But in 2020, we are going to go via the internet for responding. Not only via the internet, if individuals do not have computers, if they do not have access to a smartphone or something like that, they don't have, they can call an 800 number. And with that 800 number, they can complete the census questionnaire via that. If they not, have not responded by a certain period of time, the Census Bureau will send a reminder. Then they will send another reminder if there's no response with a paper questionnaire. And if there's no response then, then we knock on doors. We send out enumerators. And with that said, we are hiring, and we want to hire people from the community, from your community, so that when they go to the homes, that the individuals will know that they are trusted voices for that community.
Okay, so you're hiring, I heard it was $14 an hour, is that correct?
It can be anywhere from 12 to 18.
12 to 18?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And the, what was your, was the community?
The American Community Survey.
Well, no, it was, it was the committee that you were asking about.
Oh, the complete count committee, yes, ma'am.
Complete count committee.
And yes, ma'am, I do have some information in there concerning that, and you had a question.
Okay. Well, what I wondered is, is how many people on that and who's organizing that? Is that you, would you, are you the contact person for that?
I would be the contact to do the training for the committee, but I would not serve on the committee. That is a community-based committee, and what it would be, it could be anywhere from 12 to 16 people. It can also have a subcommittee that can, you know, be available, but it would have a chairperson, and a chairperson would chair the meetings. The committee would come up with the plan. They would have to have their own resources for, like if they have an event. Many of the complete count committees have events in cities that are former complete count committee, they have like a big event announcing their support and work with the Census Bureau, their partnership with us at the Census Bureau.
Okay. Is there a, well, a lot of this information, like the timeline and that sort of thing, is that on a website that we could link to during this timeline?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And if that's something that, that's a commitment that the city wants to make, that information is in the packet, is, I believe it's the last sheet on the right-hand side of your packet.
Okay.
It should be a stapled sheet.
Okay. All right. Well, that's, our IT specialist there can work this way.
And he has it, I see it right there in his packet. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? Anything anyone else to ask? All right. Well, thank you so much. Was there anything else that you wanted to share with us?
No, ma'am, just asking that you all vote for their complete count committee and the proclamation.
There's a, well, I'll put that on the next agenda. It's in here.
I can email the proclamation to Ms. Harden.
Okay.
And she can have that, so that you'll have it.
That'd be great. We can, we can do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Appreciate you being here. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for amending the city of Starkville stormwater ordinance. Mr. Kemp, would you like to, and Mr., sorry, didn't realize you were coming to here, Mr. Burnett?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board. I wanted to just kind of give you a brief overview of kind of what has changed since the last time we talked about this, which was a few weeks ago. You have in your packets updated, or the latest revision of the ordinance, which showed any revisions or alteration, any additions were underlined and any omissions that we recommend to omit or struck through. You'll see from that, there's, there's very little change from the original draft. We've not had very much feedback, comments to our office really at all, and I would say it's very minimal. So the changes you'll see are mostly related to definitions. We had a smaller revisions in the, in the penalty section based on some advice from our attorney. And I would say the, I guess the most substantial change is in the redevelopment section of the ordinance. If you remember the slide that we talked about last time, actually, I can, I can slide to it real quick. When it talked about redevelopment, commercial redevelopment, we have a site that's fully developed and a site is going to undergo a redevelopment. We looked at the scenarios of trying to reduce that runoff rate based on its existing condition to, we did three different scenarios. We did a 70% amount, an 80% and a 90%. So in other words, you would be reducing that amount by 10, 20, or 30%. And as you can see from that, we felt like that the ability to do that was somewhat unrealistic. It may be a bar really too high for developments to be able to achieve, and we certainly did not want to discourage redevelopment because we, our community has really experienced a lot of that lately. So in the latest revisions, our recommendation is to actually reduce that, or to, I guess, increase that number to 95% of its existing conditions. So in other words, the site would reduce the amount of water leaving its site by 5%. And we feel like that that can be easily achieved by just adhering to the new landscape ordinance requirements and doing some just very minimal creative site design. So, but, but at the end of the day, that site would actually be reducing their impact on the city's infrastructure system. So that, that is really the overall, I mean, the only substantial change in our opinion. I'd be well, happy to, to go back through any of these slides again, or if there's any specific questions about those, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Anyone have any questions to Mr. Kemp before I open it up for a public hearing? Okay. All right. We're opening this up as a public hearing. This will be our second public hearing on amending the city of Starkville stormwater ordinance. If anyone has anything they'd like to express about this, you can do it as a pro or con. You are welcome to come forward. We'll keep time, but generally, we provide 30 minutes per pro and 30 minutes for con. So if you have anything you'd like to say, now would be the time. Okay. All right. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Any other things from Alderman?
Just a clarification. We had heard in citizens comments, what I believe, what I thought I heard was that this would impact and make everything a hundred-year flood and have to deal with that. I just want to clarify that that is not what this ordinance does. This ordinance, in fact, would change the design storm event for developments to meet the 100-year design storm. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that going to have any impact on existing things that are considered in the floodplain or in the floodway or the 100-year floodplain?
No, the floodplain maps, which are developed and approved by FEMA, they, they would not change at all. They're totally separate.
So this zoning or this code revision has nothing to do with the FEMA floodplain maps? It is not creating any new additional maps that citizens have to abide by by the city of Starkville. It is, however, saying that if you are doing a development that meets the criteria that are outlined here, that you would have to design that development to meet the 100-year design storm.
As it's currently written, it's 100-year. The amount of water leaving your site would have to match what it was before it was developed for the two and 10 and 100-year events.
Thank you.
For a 24-hour period, right? 24-hour period, okay. Alderman Carver, I see you're in.
I guess in a development sense, my question for that is, do y'all think that's too strict? And does this trend for something from small scale, less than a couple acres? Do you see this trending to hurt small developers or hurt an individual wanting to build a residential house?
Yeah. Okay. Let me, let me take those questions, because there's several questions in there. Let me, let me first say that the applicability of it does not apply to existing single-family residential lots. Okay? So there's an existing lot that's already platted and somebody's wanting to build on it, they're exempt from that. Now, if somebody's wanting to come in and build a new residential subdivision, it would apply to that if it is over the minimum thresholds. So what we, let me show you these scenarios when you talk about scalability of development. So the last meeting, we talked about really three different scenarios. One would be a one-acre site. One would be a mid-sized subdivision, and then we had a redevelopment. So let me go through those very quickly, just so you're understanding. I know it's hard to read, but up in the top left-hand corner here, we evaluated three different iterations, if you will, of a, of a development. This is a real development that occurred in Starkville under our current ordinance, and it was .98 acres. So it fell right below the one-acre threshold. So first of all, the, the threshold is being recommended to be lowered to .5 acres, up to two acres if it's greater than 50% impervious. So this, if it were being built today, would fall under that ordinance if it's approved, as it's currently written. So I wanted to kind of give an idea of what those three different pond sizes would be. We did one for a 10-year storm, we did one for a 50, and we did one for 100. See those in the bottom left-hand corner? I know that those are just rectangular shapes, but we tried to give an idea of the scale of it relative to the development. So like I said, this is a one-acre, basically a one-acre site. And up in the top left-hand corner, you can see that a 10-year storm, based on a very conceptual design, would impact or that, the area needed for that if it was all done with a surface type. This doesn't include any kind of underground or any other kind of mitigation that could be incorporated into the landscape, is about 5.5% of that site. Okay? Now, to go to a 50-year storm would require about 7% of the site, and that's the green line that you can see here. It's kind of that green rectangular shape, and then the blue is the 100-year event, and it includes about 7.7%. So on a relatively small site, the difference between a 50-year and 100-year is .7% of an area. So very small. Really and truly, the difference between a 50 and 100 is, they're very close to one another. But there, it is obviously a bigger step up from a, you know, a stormwater mitigation standard than what we currently have, which is a 10-year. So keep that in mind, and now let's go to this other scenario where we have a much bigger area, acreage development. And this one is a 12-acre site. This is the actual layout of the subdivision that is up off Garrett Road, 12 acres. And similarly, we ran the scenarios for the three different storm events, 110, 150. The red kind of triangular shape pond here would be the 10-year storm. The green, which is kind of hard to see, is the 50, and then the 100 is virtually the same footprint of that 100-year. So those, those percentages are again included in the top left-hand corner. The 10-year event for a larger site, remember 12 acres versus one acre, goes from 5.5% down to 3.8% of the site. 50-year goes to 5%, and 100-year goes to 5.4% of the site. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, as your site scales up in overall size, the percentage of the mitigation area that you need using a detention slash retention type approach would go down. You get an economy of scale as the developments get larger. So I don't know if that helps answer your question.
It does. It was twofold question, back to the development side. As you know, I hear a lot of complaints as, the other side of what you do is, is the individual that's trying to build this from a cost-effectiveness standpoint, and so don't ever want to do anything as a city that labels us somebody that's not pro-business. I don't want to do something for an individual that's just doing .98 acres. It doesn't fit to scale on that, or maybe doesn't fit to scale with a pocketbook, much like the sidewalk debate we've had over the years. You start tacking things on here and there, and then I've had, I know individuals that have decided not to build because of some of the things that we've done, which at the end of the day, the flip side is what we see from a flooding standpoint, that if you don't do something to capture some storm water. So I see both sides, but I guess that was the second fold of what my question was, was, it's a hard question for you to answer on the spot, but you know, trending, is this something that you see inhibits future growth on these type?
Well, I mean, I think, I think what you kind of can go back to is looking at what other communities are doing, and these are peer communities for the most part, and they're very comparable to that. Like I said at the last meeting, there's a balance between protection and development, and I think you have to find what is best for our community. It truly is a policy decision. Like I said, there's really not a lot of difference between 50- and 100-year storm events. I do think that the, the trigger applicability, size, you know, I can, you can look at it from an individual site standpoint. You need to think about that for sure. But from a city holistically, we ought to also think about the compounding effect of multiple of those smaller sites occurring within the same basin can really exacerbate a situation that may be already kind of stressed. And so I think that from a policy standpoint, you really need to kind of think about and consider that. We're currently, our current requirement is one to two acres greater than 50% impervious and anything greater than two acres. It's recommended to just lower that bottom threshold from one to .5. I would say that the number of point, I don't exactly have this number, we would have to do some research and computing, but the number of sites that come in from a .5 to a one-acre, I would say are, you know, relatively small from an overall percentage of what the development applications are. But, but they do, they can cause some, some downstream impacts if they are just fully developed out from this previously undeveloped state.
Anything else, Alderman?
If somebody buys a lot in an unestablished neighborhood, is this going to trigger, let's say it's a half-acre lot, is this going to trigger they build some type of something?
Single-family residential on existing laws.
At all, okay.
If it's already planted. It's already planted.
All right. Is that all? Okay. Alderman, Beatty?
Mr. Kemp, go back to the slide that shows the hole in pond, shows the 10-year and 50-year and the...
The residential or the one-acre site?
The commercial. How much larger is that in that drawing? How much larger is the 50-year and 100-year in that base 10-year? As a percentage of the...
Okay. A 50-year storm pond is 3,000 square feet. A 100-year storm pond is 3,300 square feet. So 300 square feet more. And what we did here is that, that, those pond dimensions are kind of shown there. The width of it's given about 40 feet, and then it goes from 83 feet long down to 75.
If you're going from 10, in this, in this example, if you're going from 10 to 50-year mitigation, you're increasing the size of that hole in pond by 10%, 12%, something like that?
The, well, the...
That's not the square footage?
Well, you're increasing it about, about 2%.
2%.
Yeah. Of the overall development site area.
Just on that, just as a percentage of what, what the 10, the 10 years we have now, right?
Correct.
And we went, let's say, if a development was a 50-year, this, this particular example, their increase in size would be?
It would go from 5.5% of the site to 7% on the, on the small kind of commercial, mixed, multifamily type situation.
Economy of scale.
Economy's a scale. Obviously, as you get a larger area, for example, the subdivision, you go from 3.8 to 5.4.
Okay. Anything else, Alderman Beatty? Okay. Anyone else? Alderman's is drunk.
One, one of the things that we seem to have seen lately are not necessarily 24-hour storm events, but really heavy rainfall in a short period of time. And I know that you can measure a 100-year storm event over a 24-hour period or with greater intensity rains over a shorter period of time. You may also trigger that, that 100-year storm factor. Either, either of those events are going to be covered by the storage capacity that you're, you're requiring here, so there's no, there's no difference there.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. And sometimes it's, it's kind of hard to describe, but, but the long and the short of it is, the 24-hour storm is pretty much an industry-accepted kind of benchmark, if you will. And that scenario will yield a more conservative mitigation than, say, like a 12-hour or a six-hour storm duration. six-hour storm duration.
So if we're weighing 50 versus 100 years, is, which is the, the target for us, we need to also be weighing the difference between the measurement of a 24-hour event versus a three-hour event, or a six-hour event?
You certainly could, and that, you certainly could, and you could, I mean, all of those are theoretical storms, so you could apply whatever that is, but, but it, like I said, it is somewhat uncommon to do a 50-year, three-hour storm study, most, most all of them are 24-hour duration.
But you're going to get a smaller, by using the 24-hour measurement, you're going to get a larger?
Larger.
With a 24-hour measuring period?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe not as intense, but it's a larger amount.
Okay.
Alderman Walker?
This isn't a question, this is more to make sure that I'm thinking about this correctly. The, over this past summer, we've had a number of very intense, short-duration rain events that have caused significant issues in existing areas of town, and some out in the county. Those that we saw at Poor House Road, the images of that were, were pretty dramatic. And of those areas that had, maybe some hadn't met, our two- and 10-year storm, does our existing infrastructure able to handle sufficiently, from a two- and a 10-year storm, those intense flash flood type of events?
Mostly no.
Mostly no?
Yeah.
So if we were to choose to increase the, the burden on development to a 50- or 100-year storm, there are potentially still going to be some events that overwhelm the, the system. But some of these smaller events that we've had that have been short-duration, high-intensity, if they were having to meet a 50- or 100-year storm, would that significantly, significantly is the, my real question here, would that significantly improve stormwater management in the city of Starville?
I think it would, and I think you need to, you need to really kind of break this out into two different ideas, because there is a difference between what we're talking about tonight, mostly is storage, okay? That's the amount of area, volume that you're going to hold and slowly release. And then there's this whole other component, which they kind of work hand-in-hand, and that's the conveyance, okay? That's, that's getting the water from wherever it falls to that facility or those mitigation areas. And so in the current code, we're, we're recommending a 25-year storm event for conveyance, okay? We feel like that's a good kind of middle-of-the-road sweet spot, if you will, of, of conveying that water. Now, obviously, if it, if we have a storm event that's greater than that, which could be these flash floods, it could happen in a 15-minute period, it could happen in a 15-hour period, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't necessarily matter, it's all about the intensity over time. There will be situations where even a new, brand-new development that meets all the 25-year conveyance standards will be overwhelmed. And in those situations, what we have, you know, in the ordinance is that accommodations being made for at least the 100-year storm event. So in other words, roadways could be used as conveyance, overflow swales or channels could be used as conveyance. What we don't want to happen is the water to be overwhelmed that 20, you know, the system that's designed for a 25-year, and then go into someone else's structure. So we want to make a, I think, I can't remember exactly the terminology I was using in the ordinance, but it's essentially that, that the 100-year storm event be accommodated to that receiving facility. Now, as far as making improvements to the overall stormwater management, yes, it would make a big impact, going from a 10 to either a 50 or 100. Thank you.
Alderman Carrick?
Are the apartments that are down there on Poor House, is that on the same water that comes down through, the stream that comes through Turnberry and Country Club? Just a question. There's some things happening in that area, and I guess it's.
I don't think it is.
It isn't?
I'm.
There's just some things going on in the city, you know, and you and I, we've all talked about this, but something's happened, because if there's houses been installed for something close to 100 years that have never had situations, and then it happened, that's statewide, obviously, but something's happened, because has there ever been any prior incidents at that Poor House location of flooding?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, obviously, that was a pretty severe event, I mean, it was several feet of water into a, into a structure, and I'm not, I just am not that familiar with when properties in the county flood, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if there's nothing else, Mr. Kemp, thank you so much. And Alderman Walker, you did not move the public hearing, so we now have a.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was going to guess you did, no? I don't think you. All right, now we have our, this will be the third public hearing on an ordinance enlarging, extending, and defining the corporate limits and boundaries of the city of Starville, also known as the annexation ordinance. So here's the opportunity for anyone who did not get to speak, or would like to speak now on this matter. We have 30 minutes available to you, and the city clerk will be keeping time, so you are welcome to come up and speak to this. Yes, if you would, remember to identify yourself, please.
Hey there, my name's Lydia Allison, and I live in Shealy Hills. I know that my husband, Tim, he can't be here tonight, but he's been talking to Mr. Hamp, I believe. But, so all of us in Shealy Hills are back, sitting back there, and we moved in Shealy Hills 30 years ago, and we were the first couple, young couple, to, we're only the second owners of our house. We're the oldest couple, we've been there longer than anybody in Shealy Hills, except for Ms. Wilson, Edith Wilson, who's 103, she was one of the first owners. And I just want to say that we have always been so satisfied with everything that we have already. We, we're not a large neighborhood, you know that, and I just want to echo everything that Sally Loughlin said, she's my neighbor, that she got up here and talked. I want to just, you know, echo everything that she said, y'all know that we don't want this, please don't impose your, the city's will on our neighborhood. We did send out, we, we went around, and we did do, I can't even think of the word, we sent y'all a petition. Most everyone in our neighborhood signed the petition, there was a few people that weren't there, but most everybody feels the same way. So I, I just want to, you know, plead with y'all that this is unnecessary, I agree with Sally about the gerrymandering and the MSU border, I mean, that's, that's real, that's real, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Allison. Anyone else? Anyone else? Now's your opportunity.
Daniel Crump, I own property out in Clayton Village, and please, don't do this, we're in the county for a reason, that's how we like it. Starville's a fine city, but don't impose your will on us, because we don't want it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crump. Anyone else?
Sally Loughlin, 257 Lakewood Drive, Starville, Mississippi, Shealy Hills. I do want to point out that, you see the gerrymandered area that I was referring to, Shealy Hills probably has less than 50 people. It's not a huge community. Our houses are modestly priced, mine was built in 1949, and as I said, once again, I just don't see much benefit to the city of Starville, and very little benefit to me. We love Shealy Hills, we love it the way it is, we do not need sidewalks, as I said, we keep four counties, we keep a lot of things, except Michael Aldrich's man, and Mr. Ware has promised me bags with rollers on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loughlin. Anyone else?
Jeff Foster. I live in Green Oaks, but I have property in the county. The, the last meeting, we talked about a lot of things the city could give, excuse me, a lot of things the city couldn't give, and one thing the city could give is fire protection. It dawned on me, we have a fire department that's not manned 24 hours a day, to this date, it's not manned. How can you take on any more infrastructure or property if you have an unmanned facility right now? The, the second thing is, is I hope if this does receive a trial, if and when it does, that this board will ask any local judges that might hear this case or accuse themselves. We need to have all appearances of fairness, and even, and thoughtful process going on. So again, I hope this board will ask any local judge to recuse that might hear this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close it as a.
Again, White Price, that's my property out there, one little thing on Mr. Little, Mr. Little, you're on target about the existing floodways and stuff, and not building out them. You're also on target about an extremely heavy rain in a parking lot, and I've seen it build up six or eight inches of foot in the parking lot, and it takes a while to get to the retention facilities or runoff or whatever. Being, living in Houston a few years, I have a little experience in that area. On to the annexation here. I'll be real happy to see the fire line out there, we'd be looking for paving the roads, there's about four or five of them, not in your budget, so that kind of shocks your budget, but we want to be sure we get that in the transitory court decree, so it'll have to be done, and then it won't come up some years later and say, we're not going to do that because it's not cost-effective. So that's just not the thing, and I guess the street lights will be light, but we also already have security lights, so it's not a big deal to us one way or the other. But all of the impact of being controlled, like Alderman Sistrunk wants to control us, that's our big issue.
Thank you, Mr. Presson. Anyone else?
Lydia Allison, Shealy Hills. I just wanted to refer to what this gentleman said about the, the fire station, and for y'all to think about that. And also, we found out that we would not be able to use the county hospital, the ambulance, the, the other ambulance from the city costs a lot more money, so, but the fire station is not manned, and I just wonder if the figures that were up on that report that y'all had are really, you know, true to what they said, because it, yeah, that's, so, a lot of it didn't add up, and anyway, that's, I just wanted to echo that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close it as a public hearing. And the next item on the agenda is.
Vice Mayor.
Oh, sure, yeah. Alderman, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for recognizing the board members on this very important matter, thank you. Mayor, when I get finished, I'll announce to the floor, when I yield, just several questions, and I'm going to ask these questions based upon my prior experiences and years on this board over the last 26 years, I think it's very clear, there are a lot of things to be really clear. I'm going to start off by asking a question, and Mr. Trendon, is Mr. Slaughter here, am I overlooking him?
He's not here tonight.
Okay, well.
Observation mayor.
Since, since he's not here, Mr. Kemp, let me, the younger Kemp, let me ask you a question. Will you identify a barbecue road on that map for me? Will you identify barbecue road on that, on this map, this proposed annexation for me?
Right up here.
Okay, are you aware, as an engineer, of, since Mr. Slaughter's not here, has anyone asked you about that area coming into the city, to your knowledge? To your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Kemp, you know, there's been a lot of talk about reasonableness of the annexation plan, are you familiar with this barbecue road?
Yes, sir.
And, and this barbecue road, it kind of busts in close to Ward 6, somewhere thereabout, a lot of pasture-type area near Stow, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And are you aware of the condition of that road?
Yes, sir.
Now, you know, we've just heard your, your report on the stormwater, we've heard comments about all the drainage issues that we had over the years, and this summary and so forth. Let's talk about barbecue road for a minute. Have you had the opportunity to just examine or view the condition of that road?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clemens, would you pull up the, a picture of barbecue road for me, so I can actually, our city engineer who we've had since 2007, some questions? Would you just show the board, let's look, take a look at barbecue road?
Yes, sir.
Now, that, that's the road, that's in the upper part of that map, right?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, let's, let's just take a look, let's kind of run that, run that road, let's just kind of go, I want the still shots, Mr. Clemens, and let's, let's take a look at it. Can we turn this light off here, because I can't see up here, that road there?
Somebody's taken the labels off of the lights, so I'm going to have to.
Okay, there we go. So this is barbecue road?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Now, now, is that's the width of this road?
Yes, sir.
Now, are you not aware of anybody talking about bringing this road into the city? But what's the width of this road, to your knowledge, Mr. Engineer?
They're closest to Stowood, it's probably about 16 feet wide, and then it gets a little bit narrower as you actually go up the hill.
So, and by how long is this road?
It's about 1,100 feet long.
So all this is barbecue road right here?
Yes, sir.
And would you just tell the board, given your expertise and your, and your expert opinion as an engineer, why somebody states in Mississippi, what, and this is barbecue road here?
Yes, sir.
All this environment here is in barbecue road?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clemens, can we get back on the roadway for just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Let's go back, yeah, let's camp out right there. Mr. Kemp, what do you see as some challenges, if any, as to some costs that would be associated? Let's start talking about, what do you think, is your opinion, would be the cost to chip seal this road?
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor, I did a, did a cost estimate today. My estimation to chip seal, that'd be soil cement as well, similar to what we've done in some other gravel-type roadways. Soil cement and chip seal would be around $43,000.
$43,000 to chip seal this road here?
Yes, sir.
How many people live, how many houses on this road?
I think about six or seven.
About six or seven houses on this road, about $43,000. What would be the cost, Mr. Kemp, if the city were to, just to hot-mix asphalt without any curb and gutter?
To do a soil cement, again, of the roadway base, and overlay, it's going to be around $77,000.
$77,000 just to incorporate that into our street improvement program, be about $77,000?
Yes, sir.
And your street improvement program, to my recollection, Mr. Kemp, has already been approved as of this date by the board, at least through this term, right?
That's correct.
So this road would have to find a way into the plan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kemp, tell me what would be the, the cost for asphalt with curb and gutter?
I don't have that exact figure, Vice Mayor, but it would be well over $100,000.
Well over $100,000 just for this road right here? And, and, and I have not had anybody to ask me about bringing this road into the city. And so you, you don't have any reason why, do you not aware of any, you don't have any personal knowledge of why this road is being proposed, do you?
I do not, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Clemens, show me some other part, I know that there's some inclines, did you notice any inclines or any other challenges about this road, Mr. Engineer?
Yes, sir, when you turn off a Stowood road, go for a distance, and you go around a curve, and then you go up this hill right here, it's probably about a 6% or 8% grade going up, maybe 10 closer to the top, and you can see on the, on the left-hand side right there, where the, the ground slope there is even higher, so it's, it's kind of a ridge right there that the roadway goes up.
So, and this is the barbecue road that's in the proposed annex area?
Yes, sir.
And all this overgrown. And all this overgrown, um, growth, green growth in the ditches, right?
Yes, sir.
And all that would have to be, it had to be incorporated into the cap improvement plan?
Right, yes, sir.
And that's gonna cost us a, a lot of money, wouldn't you think, just to get that up to par?
Right, you'd have to do some drainage stabilization there coming down the slope.
And I see there's some erosion right there at the bottom of that hill?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and that, and the kinda inclines up and down that, that location, is that right, Mr. Kemp?
Yes, sir, it does, it goes up that hill right there.
And what, what are some other challenges that you see about this road, Mr. Kemp?
I mean, it's, you know, it's a, it's a typical gravel, you know, rural-type roadway, so we would need to, you know, if we're gonna improve it via, with some pavement, you would need to, you know, make sure that has adequate drainage on the sides of the, of the roadway. Some places, there's, you can see in some other photographs, there's not a whole lot of ditches, um, kinda up on top of the hill, so it'd have to be some, some additional grading there, which would extend out into the, some of the properties a little bit, but, you know, it would be very similar to improving some of the other gravel roads that we've done, with some drainage and base and surfacing.
But we normally do not have other gravel roads that gonna cost $43,000 normally.
I don't know of any other road similar to this in the, in the city.
Right, Mr. Terry Kemp, would you come forward just a moment, please? I wanna ask you a question, keep your seat, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Kemp, as you come forward, I want you to address as to what challenges, if any, that you would see in terms of getting the sewer in this area. Let me tell you why I'm asking that question. I got an area right now that was annexed in 1998, and those residents, and along with the Vice Mayor, were informed that, you know, that, that they would at least get the sewer within the five years, so it's been over two decades since, since that representation was made. So I wanna know, on this sixth day of August of 2019, I wanna make sure these people, if they're brought into the city, may not have to wait another 21 years. So would you tell me, Mr. Kemp, if this area is annexed into the city, and given the location of this barbecue road, what challenges, if any, do you see from an economic feasibility point of view? That's the words I think they got in this, all that legal language in there. What, what challenges do you see from economic feasibility point of view in terms of providing sewer to this area, and, and address it in terms of the cost, if any, the cost?
Vice Mayor, you're talking, the area that we're looking here-
The barbecue road area.
-is kinda the very end of part of, I guess what you'd say, that first section.
Yes, sir.
So we'll make extensions, making connections back on Old West Point Road, on Garrett Road, and then this would be the very end of that part, of that sewer expansion.
Yes, sir.
That expansion would cost probably about $750,000, I think is what our, what our estimates are.
$750,000?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
To do that.
Yes, sir.
And, and that would take into those connections, and this resident, this house is, I think, as Edward alluded to, we count about seven in that group, that, that is a part of the population that would be on that sewer. And right now, I think by the studies that the consultant did, there's probably about 20 total in that whole area, so if you looked at the cost associated with it, Vice Mayor, I think what you're looking at is economic feasibility, that's gonna be pushing your per-unit cost up to somewhere around 35, 40 something thousand dollars. So, from a utility, our concern would be as to how you would fund that through the enterprise program, because that's where our, that's where our costs would be. Was that what your question was?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Kemp, and I can see I had a few more comment, comments, Mayor, I yield in a few minutes. Thank you, Mr.-
Is that it?
Yes, sir, and just some additional comments, and the lights can come back on for a moment, but what I additionally want to say, you have areas like barbecue road that present these type of challenges and costs to come into the city, it's just not economically feasible to bring an area like this where these constituents, or intended constituents, did not even ask to come in, even they did ask to come in, we just cannot afford it, because when they get into the city, they're gonna be calling an Alderman, and it is very likely, if this area gets into the city, it's very likely that it's gonna get into Ward 6. And whoever Ward it gets in, because if it's brought into Ward 6, I'm gonna just tell them, "Go see whoever passed this bill. Don't come asking me for one red penny, because I'm not gonna fight for no, no chip seal." Mr. Kemp, you don't have to worry about me asking if you come to the city, I'm not asking for no asphalt, no concrete, no curb, and no gutter. I've been through this many, many a times. So, you know, things like this, there's no rational basis to bring this in. We just heard from the engineer, we just heard from the director of the utility department, areas like this need to be excluded from the plan, just like the, the citizens who have come up en masse out at the University of States. I've traveled that area over the last several days, you know, there are some infrastructure issues out there. You have apartments, the retreat, another set of apartment, maybe, I think it's the Canterbury, the Cambridge, the, and other areas where we're leaving parts of the areas in and leaving parts out. And I heard the consultant say last time that the reason that we wanna leave some in is because of emergency access. I mean, the, the law enforcement can get access wherever it needs to, I mean, they can turn around the middle of the road once they put the blue lights on. I mean, that is a, a area out to the east of the city, it's a very fine area where the people have the right to live where they choose, that's what makes this country great. I mean, we should not impose government regulations upon these people. If they had wanted to live in the city, then they would've lived in the city. From all of the people that I heard from University of States, about 98, or 99% of them say they don't, they do not live, wanna live in the city. So what, what is the city's push? What is the city's basis? I mean, what, what is the city seeking to achieve? There are, from my personal observation out there, there are chip seal roads that are gonna have to be improved, and we all know how, when areas get into the city, the taxpayers say, "Well, we, we want asphalt." They get tired of the chip seal, the chip seal start cracking, it start tearing away at the seam, it start deteriorating, then next thing they want curb and gutter, there gonna be drainage issues, there gonna be erosion issues, and all is gonna boil down to dollars and cents. So the best thing to do is just put the brakes on this plan. We've seen barbecue road, and hopefully, this photograph of barbecue road was an enlightenment of some who may not have known about barbecue road. And no disrespect to the people who live on barbecue road, but the issue is, is that we have to be great stewards of the taxpayers' purse. We have to be conservative stewards of the taxpayers' purse. There's nothing conservative about bringing an area like this with all these type of potential expenditures. If we leave areas like this out, then we don't have to worry about mileage increases. If we leave areas like this out, we don't need mileage increases to fund operations of our government. We need to put the brakes on this plan. Barbecue needs to be out in any more areas just like barbecue. I mean, just a little area that's stuck up, up, up there on the top of the map. There's no basis, no one has, from barbecue has come to me, even they come to me, I'll say, "Well, look, I, I cannot support barbecue road," because there's no reasonableness in there. What are we seeking to gain? Are we seeking to gain revenue from these people out there? No. I mean, if you apply the cost-benefit analysis to this area, it costs in the city a greater cost than the benefit we're gonna obtain. What is it that the city wants to get from bringing barbecue in? Of all the areas that I've heard, on the residential areas, even with the University of States, the Sheila Hill, these are fine neighborhoods. I took the time out of my office the other day with the, with a constituent who, and a business person to ride out through the University of States. They have indicated through their testimony that, that they do not need anything for this, from the city. They don't want anything from the city. These are hard-working Americans. These are hard-working October Hall Canyons. They should not be dragged into the city of Starkville. And this is what you hear in another country. That's what make United States of America the greatest country in the world, because we have the, the freedom and the liberty to choose where we wanna live, we can choose who we wanna live around, we can choose what kinda home we wanna live in, we can choose the size of our home, we can choose our environment. And, and put yourself in these people's situation. If you have a nice home, just think about it for a minute. If I have a, and if I live in a county, I don't need nobody dictating to me to tell me where I need to live. It's my land, it's America, the United States of America. I don't need nobody dictating to me, tell me where to live, you got to live in the city, we don't care what you say. And this is not right. The reason I'm talking about this, because I've been through a lot of annexations, and, and these people have a right to be heard, and, and I don't blame them, take the matter to court if that's your will. That's what this judicial system is for. If you're not satisfied with whatever may happen here, take it to court, because you have the right to, to the freedom, you have the right to the liberty, you have the right to the freedom of choice, and you have the right to not be bothered by government officials. We have enough government regulations in this country, in this world. People don't want all these government mandates, lead the people on, get off of the people, let the people have a breath of fresh air. Sheila Hill's a nice estate, nice neighborhood, nice community. University of States, nice. Old Mayhill Road, Cambridge, all those roads, Biggs, all those roads out there. All that area, and the city is seeking to expand all the way out to the old drive-in theater. If you look at that map careful enough, that map goes, it's a very extensive annexation because that map goes up on that bypass. When you just look at it, it's, it's really not clear how far it goes off that bypass, and it goes back across, from my looking at it, back over to the 16-section road. And when you look at it on the north of that road, this map is, is very strategically gerrymandered, it's very strategically drawn. But the bottom line is, we don't need no area in there like barbecue road, because it's not cost-effective. Regardless of what maybe said after I finish talking, it's not cost-effective, it costs too much. Y'all saw the photograph on the barbecue road, and we don't need to, need to bring in Sheila Hills. There's no rational and reasonable basis to bring in University of States. The, the expert who drew the plan at the last session said, "Well, the reason we're doing this is because we want to have some frontage." I have never seen a law enforcement officer can, you know, can make a turn or do what they need to do when there's an emergency. There's a lot of legal doctrines that allows the law enforcement to, to get in hot pursuit. When they put those lights on, I mean, you know, they have the authority to do what they need to do, and that is to serve and protect. The emergency vehicles, that's no problem. That is no problem. We've heard business owners who don't wanna be in the city, they are concerned. We've heard from these business owners, they're doing well where they are, and if this measure passed tonight, it is nothing but a forced governmental requirement, a governmental mandate to, to drag or force or bring these areas into the city against their will. This is just un-American, in my opinion. It is wrong, it is not right. Now, in closing, just put yourself in the position of the people who don't wanna come in. What if, if each one of us were living where we wanted to live, and then we face a governmental body, and they say, "Well, look, we're gonna annex you into the city regardless of what you say. We don't care what you say, how you say it, who your lawyer is, we don't care, but we're gonna bring you, how would you feel? How would you feel, Board of Alderman?" And I'm gonna tell you how the Vice Mayor would feel. If somebody gonna tell me what I got to do with my property and where I live, I'm gonna get me a lawyer, and I'm gonna defend my property rights and my family values, that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna defend my property rights and my family values, that's what I'm going to do. And it appears that this matter is, is headed to final passage, but I, it was just on my heart to say that tonight. And, and the citizens from all these areas have come up here, a meeting after meeting, they've had to come up here and state their case, and plead their case, and, and they should not be put to this onerous task, onerous burden. So I would just like to say that, you know, hopefully, this board will just eliminate all these residential areas, and we definitely don't need to include Sheila Hills and University of States. And last but not least, we don't need barbecue road up in there at all. And Mr. Attorney, as I yield, get ready to yield the floor, I like to, you know, since all these comments and this, this video was shown during the hearing, as a matter of law, you know, the, you know, this matter goes up, you know, on appeal, I would like for you to ensure that the, that, that this exhibit is made a part of the record, like it has been done in other meetings, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, yield the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and echo some of the things that Vice Mayor Perkins said. Edward, I'm not gonna mess with you, because I'm upset by a couple streets in my ward right now, but they what? They come up in 2021, 2022, they on down the line, and they need paving right now. So, and I'm just saying, when will you get chance to pay these streets if we annex something in? When will they get chance to get paid? Because we already got a, how many year plan out of this, right now?
We're in year two of a four, five-year plan.
Two of the five-year plan. So I got some streets that won't come up till probably three years from now, or two years from now, that need to be paid right now. So I, this, that's my thing about this annexation. I'm not against economic development, I'm not against growth, I'm not against none of that. I'm against the way we do things, as supposed to be making wise decisions for the city. That's what I'm against, I'm against the decision that we make. Why would I wanna make somebody come somewhere when they don't wanna be? That, that bothers me, that really bothers me. It's just like me coming to one of your houses, and you tell me, "Get out your yard." First thing you gonna do, you gonna call the police if I don't get out your yard, or shoot me. These people don't wanna come in, why are we messing with them? Why are we bothering them? Why don't we just stop this process right now and start all back over again, and look at something else? Instead of messing with people just constantly telling you, "I don't want this, I got fire, I got good fire protection, I got sewage, I got water, I don't want this." What is so hard for us to understand? They don't wanna be bothered with us. If they don't wanna be bothered with us, why are we making them be coming to this city if they don't wanna be in the city? These people bought their houses out in the county, that's where they wanna be, that's where they happen. Leave the peoples alone, and let's start all over again. I, I say, I know the vote's probably in place, but you don't matter to me, because I'm not gonna support it, and I wouldn't doubt support it, because when somebody tell me they don't want something, I'm not gonna make them, I'm not gonna make them take it. That's just like a baby, you try to feed babies some food, when the baby shake their head, "No, no," they don't want the food, so you stop. Why are we keep messing with these people? I don't understand. We supposed to be leaders of this city. We supposed to lead, lead and guide the peoples in the right, right direction, make a wise decision, oversee their money, their money spent wisely. Just got money not being spent wisely, if we gotta go do all this to develop all these areas when they come in, and we still got areas in the city? I mean, there's some roads in the city right now, if you go look at, at some of the ditches, some of the drainage, look just like that. Why we ain't had them fixing them? Why we not fixing all? And then we talking about going somewhere and bringing something in that you got to fix, you got to repair, you got to repair. It, it doesn't make sense to me. Mayor, Board, I wish we would just stop, kill this now, and start all over. I think that'd be the best thing that we do. So a lot of things we should do, sometimes we should pray before we do something, we should just ask God, "Which way do that go? What is the best decision?" And I don't think it was a wise decision from the start, because it was piecemeal. Certain people was in and on, and certain people wasn't even- Certain people was in and on, certain people wasn't even out of it. Certain people know about it, some people didn't know about it. I don't think there was a wise decision from the start. So, when you don't do things decent and order, it don't work out. It always going to be some trouble. The Bible always tells us, do things decent and in order. And this wasn't done decent and in order, and it's still not decent and in order, because they don't want no part of this city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty.
Mayor, may I put a, give it a little different perspective to this discussion?
Certainly.
Um, I've now experienced three public hearings on this proposed annexation and appreciate the civility shown by ninety-five percent of the speakers and attendees of the hearings. Some of the speakers have been sharp-horned towards city board members, but on the whole, comments and discourse has been appropriate. There have been disparaging remarks made about our city hall and about the changes that have been made to Russell Street that have nothing to do with our proposed annexation. These comments were simply made to insult Starkville city officials about their decision-making. The new city hall, recent improvements made on Russell Street, in my opinion, are two most, are two of the most thoughtful, well-planned additions that have been made in Starkville in the past twenty years and show progress, forward-thinking attitude of city officials. Now, it's not been acknowledged in any of these hearings by anyone, since I've been on the board, that people in the city of Starkville are also county residents and pay county avalon taxes to maintain roads outside the city limits. A significant amount of the avalon tax money levied for road and bridge repair in Octavia County comes from the residences and businesses within the city of Starkville. Fifty percent of county taxes that are collected in Starkville specifically for the road and bridge tax levy are spent on roads outside the city limits. Please know also that if a house or a business in, in the proposed annexed area catches fire, catches on fire during working hours in the daytime, Starkville Fire Department, operating through a mutual aid agreement, will by necessity be the first responder to the property and will contain the fire before the East Octavia County Volunteer Fire Department can respond. That's the reason Starkville has a Class Four fire rating. We have full-time firefighters and better equipment to respond and put out fires quickly. I've been told by property insurance adjusters that many fires outside the city limits in the daytime result in total loss because volunteer firemen cannot get to the station and respond quickly enough to save the property. The city of Starkville basically protects your homes and businesses without adequate, being adequate, adequately compensated. It was stated that there are sewer capital improvements planned by East Octavia Waste Water Association will cost, which will cost approximately five million dollars and be paid for with USDA loans and grants. What wasn't mentioned was that the city of Starkville Sewer Treatment Facility collects and treats all of the sewage from MSU, which includes sewage influent from the East Octavia Waste Water Association. Starkville charges for this service, but it would be extremely expensive for MSU and the East Octavia Waste Water Association to collect and treat their sewage in a standalone facility. The cost of a new sewage treatment facility with capacity to handle both the MSU and the East Octavia wastewater would probably be costing anywhere in the neighborhood of forty to fifty million dollars. If you are currently connected to the East Octavia, East Octavia wastewater sewage system, or we will be part of the expanded system, please know that Starkville is providing a very valuable service for you. Also, there is not a business on Highway one eighty-two within the proposed annexed area that would exist except for its proximity to Starkville. The city of Starkville has a market trade area population of a hundred thousand, including MSU students, which produces nearly six hundred million dollars in annual retail sales. That is the reason that businesses locate on Highway one eighty-two next to Starkville. I have a friend who owns a Ford dealership in central Mississippi who told me that Starkville Ford, now Cannon Ford, is probably the only Ford dealership in the state of Mississippi located out the corp, outside the corporate limits of a municipality. The opposition to this annexation has ostensibly been about wanting to live in the country or losing control of property rights, but what it's really about is the prospect of paying cities taxes for benefits that are already being provided by the cities such as fire protection. I suspect that the cost of property insurance will decrease in this area when the fire protection class in that area, in this new annexed area improves from seven to four. Please know that you do benefit from living or owning a business next to the city of Starkville, even if you don't realize it or want to admit it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty. Any other comments or discussion?
Well, I can say.
Alderman Carver.
Yes, thank you. If this was a annexed area that we started with, that might, some of that might hold water, but this was, you know, let's, let's scale back and remember that when this started, that this annexation was to have a goal of over thirty thousand from a retail strategy standpoint and to have MSU. So, honestly, I mean, at this point, it's been scaled back probably eighty to ninety percent of the land. Would you say eighty percent's a conservative number? Uh, to what, you know, if we'd have started with this, that'd probably been pretty valid, um, proposed annexation area, but I would say of what we've, what we've talked about, you know, this was not what was started. This was something that's been scaled back and scaled back and scaled back. I think the bigger picture here is like, probably the idea of good governance, and this is something to where you got to have a pulse on the community and, and this is, I mean, the word on the street is people don't want it, you know. Talk about quality of life, but Alderman, Vice Mayor Perkins asked, you know, what would you want to do if somebody was, if I chose to live right outside of city limits to have a good quality of life? And, and you asked the, the question to the Board of Alderman, how would you feel? I'd be mad. I mean, I would really be mad, because I chose to live there for a reason. I see some gerrymandering is the word of the night, obviously, but, um, really questionable lines, if you want to look right up to the south side of one eighty-two. Again, I say the votes will be there. It wouldn't come through this process this far, so you'll see this pass tonight. Uh, I guess with Alderman Little not being here and his situation, uh, the mayor will pass it on a tie vote. Uh, I do think you said it's correct in your campaign promises and, and everybody up here campaigns on promises, and I think that that's an effective thing to do, is to come back and check. And you want to say, like the President of the United States wants to have a checklist and come back in four years, anybody wants to say this is what I've accomplished, and that's good for an elected official to do that. I think sometime you do need to step back and say, you know, and I'll tell you this, if we, if I really felt like I could put my hand on a Bible in front of a judge and say that we have provided all service from the nineteen ninety-eight annexation, uh, I might feel different about what we've rested on tonight with this proposed area, but I can't sit there and sleep at night and say that we, we've still got areas. I do think the Barbecue Road is an example that was brought up. You're going to create further pockets in this area that, uh, might be swept under the rug is one way to look at it. Uh, some of y'all won't provide, can get provided services immediately or overnight or anytime, uh, with my tenure or my time on the board, but, uh, and the greater, greater harm is the fact that once you move to this area, the areas from the nineteen ninety-eight annexation are pretty much forever swept under the rug. And I could be wrong, but, um, it's, it's a forgotten area, so we've, we've moved on. I just, you know, I really question, and, and I, I think the pulse and the community's questioning, why this? I mean, you started with an area that's so, so large and, and had Mississippi State, and as soon as Mississippi State, uh, you're right, Mr. Tolliver, as soon as Mississippi State wanted out, uh, encompassed all the area around Mississippi State, which was an odd annexed area, and then, uh, I think some individuals had some influence and, and scaled it back to this. I think in theory, um, I think we need to just step back and solve nineteen ninety-eight's annex, annex problems and areas. I don't think it's really economically feasible to, uh, to take this on right now. I think we've still got some things from staffing issues. I just think it's a couple of years, uh, two to three to four years, uh, too, too early. So, I've been there, uh, from the start. And then again, I would just, I would say, you know, sometimes this city in the name of progressivism or wants to be the first to do everything, and this town does that in a lot of, in a lot of good ways, uh, you know, smoke-free city. Uh, there's a lot of things we've done over the years that have been good to be first in and to be, uh, on the cutting edge, but at the time, right now, I just, you know, one thing is, I would say, my numbers are probably rough, but I would say it's roughly, I missed a meeting when a man was in support of this annexation. Had a state championship baseball game, but I haven't seen somebody in support of it yet. And I, I know my calculations are a little over three hundred, so, um, from mathematical standpoint, from emails, texts, calls, and especially up here, I would say in the ninety-nine percentile of y'all don't want it and people watching. So, I've really only heard of one or two, and there may be someone else that emailed some of y'all that, you know, knew not to email me, but I would say, uh, mathematically, when you've got three hundred to one, three hundred plus to one, it's a pretty sure sign that, um, you know, from a good government, good governance standpoint, you know, the day that you get elected is not the last day that you listen to your constituents. So you should do that for the, for the remainder of your term. So, I think this is one of those we need to step back and just, I'd be all in favor of tableing it, or, uh, as Alderman Perkins said, just give it a little time and solve the nineteen ninety-eight problem. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Sistrunk.
I've, I've read a lot about annexation in other communities, and the things that y'all bring forward as, um, issues are consistent with every other place that's done in annexation. We have started with a, a, a big plan, and based on what we have heard, we have scaled it down. I, I, um, I just don't agree with the use of the word gerrymandering. We've, um, our consultant has drawn those lines to, um, to match borders that were reasonable and that will be looked at as, as this moves forward, if it moves forward. But I do think, um, there's nothing unique about, about the conversations we're having, the points that y'all are raising. These are very typical during an annexation process. I do think that there's, um, a lot to be said for what Mr. Carver and Alderman Perkins and Alderman Vaughn said about putting this, putting this behind us. We have spent a lot of time on this, and it is time to put it, put it behind us. I appreciate very much, um, Alderman Beatty's well-thought-out points there, and it, it frequently does get lost in the shuffle that the city of Starkville, um, carries a lot of weight of, of Octavia County. We have a, a budget with property taxes of about seven million in the city limits. We pay over fourteen million dollars to Octavia County in, in property taxes. Um, and that's just the nature of a densely developed area versus the county area. Um, but, but that is, that is what it is. So, um, with the thought of, let's take a vote, we either move forward or we put this behind us and let another group take it up later, I would move that we approve the ordinance.
This is just a public.
Oh, shoot.
Sorry. Well, I mean, you can make a motion, but this was just a public hearing portion. Uh, Alderman Walker moved it below that.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, in terms of action? Okay. So, we're, we were in the discussion phase then.
Okay. Well, when the time comes, I'll make the motion.
Anyone else? Alderman Walker, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Okay. Well, I think I do. So, since this is the discussion phase, I'll go ahead and, and make my, my points associated with this. Um, and I'll go back to Alderman Carver. He's accused me of following up on, uh, campaign promises. I didn't make campaign promises. What I said was, I believe that this was an appropriate thing for the board to look at. I think we've done a very good job of looking all around the city as to what would be appropriate, which is why we started with that first area. I believe that we have taken very judicious steps and have backed away from areas that didn't make sense. Um, each one of us up here had a different reason for being interested in this, whether we were interested, uh, in it not happening or we were interested in it happening. You know, I wanted us to go over thirty thousand. I first wanted to tell you, and I thought that we had provided MSU an opportunity to be comfortable with that. They were not comfortable with that and, or with being annexed. And while the, uh, IHL, the university can, can say no. I mean, we don't, it's not like we, they said no and we said, oh, well, the hands are thrown up. It wasn't an option for us. We don't get to come in and take in a university unless they're in agreement with it. So, um, one of the things that has, has moved us to where we are now is these are the areas of growth. These are the paths. Um, when people think they're in the city, it's just like Blackjack Road. That was looked at as well. And we did not take in Blackjack Road, but I am constantly getting, um, information and requests about why we don't pave Black, Blackjack Road. Well, it's not in the city. This is not much different from that. There's a whole lot of areas out here that people believe are in the city of Starkville. And we end up with, uh, a desire to bring areas that in, in that are enjoying being in proximity to the city but are not paying the taxes in, um, in what I call, I say their fair share. And it's not so much residences that I am specifically referring to as it is the business, just like Alderman Beatty spoke to the Ford dealership that has been outside the city limits for ever, ever since I can remember, whatever, however long it's been there, and I'm not really sure how long it has been there. But control of our borders, um, and understanding that these, some of the services that we provide, we are already providing, as Alderman Beatty spoke, uh, our fire department responds. Um, the water and sewer coming through MSU and through areas that are in that, um, district come through the city, so we're already providing those services. So these are things that are not going to be significantly different, and I'm, to be perfectly honest, I'm a little surprised that anybody doesn't think Starkville's a great place to be. I mean, I, I don't think that we're going to do anything that is going to cause your lives to change dramatically. Um, I really think that from a, particularly from a residential standpoint, with the exception of garbage, I don't see that there is much that's going to create a difference for you in how you go about what you're doing. Stormwater is obviously one of those things that is important to us. We're about to, uh, deal with a stormwater ordinance, which matters greatly in how, um, homes relate to one another, businesses relate to one another, and the, the building and the construction and the impact that it has on your neighbors. Um, zoning is particularly important. There are areas out here that could conceivably become anything they wanted to be, um, and you may have your residence right next to it. So, I think there are some important elements that a city brings to an annexed area, and I think the, that we bring more, far more than you feel you will be deprived of when, when that transition, um, occurs. You are very, very close to the city limits of Starkville. I don't, there's nothing gerrymandered to me about this. We took in what we could take in that was contiguous to the city and that wrapped into the, the eighty-two bypass and the one eighty-two area, which is the area that is considered to be in Starkville as you make your approach into the community, into Starkville and into Mississippi State University. So I don't think we have gone beyond what is very judicious and very conservative in our approach to this. I think it's been well thought out, and I believe that annexation is the right thing for us to do. I realize there are going to be some who are not happy about this, but from my perspective, um, the city in its entirety is my scope and what I believe to be in the best interest of the city as a whole is the vote that I would take on that. And I believe that annexation is appropriate for our community at this point in time. So, having said that, we're out of, out of the public, um, out of public hearings, and we will move now to the next item on the agenda, which is going to be under board business discussion, consideration of amending the city of Starkville stormwater ordinance. It was listed as declaring it to be a matter of health, safety, and welfare, making it effective immediately. Unfortunately, because we are not a full complement of board members, that element of it can't be done, so now it would just be the discussion, consideration of amending the city of Starkville stormwater ordinance, which would take in, uh, take effect in the, in the thirty days if the board chooses to pass it. Do I have any discussion? Do I have a motion? Alderman Walker.
Question, ma'am. Just wanted to make sure I'm clear on what you just said. So, the discussion and consideration of amending the city of Starkville stormwater ordinance, uh, and making it effective within thirty days.
Thirty days. The normal, the normal timeline for a, an ordinance to become effective is thirty days. And absent, um, all seven, Alderman, that is not a, um, an opportunity for us to make it effective immediately.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Alderman Walker.
One second. One second. Oh, I'm going to make sure if you go. May I, may I move approval?
Okay. I have a motion for approval of the amending the Starkville stormwater from Alderman Walker. I have a second from Alderman Beatty. Further discussion?
Mayor, I recognize.
Vice Mayor.
Attorney, um, just, um, and this is a good ordinance, just one point of, um, law and procedure here, um, to accommodate one of my colleague's inquiries about making this ordinance, um, effective immediately. So if this motion passes right here, attorney, then it'll be effective thirty days.
Correct.
Then we'll be meeting in two weeks. Just an option.
True.
And if we have seven members, it could go in effect sooner. Is that correct?
Good.
I just want to point that out. So I'm not, I'm not trying to offend amendment. I'm just talking as a matter of, of procedure and law. I'm just talking as a matter of procedure and law, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sistrunk.
And the only thing I would add to that is I don't have any idea when Alderman Little is going to feel like he's ready to come back.
That's fine. I just thought I'd just give that legal thought there, Attorney.
All right, I have a motion to second any further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Next item is a consideration of special warranty deed between City of Starkville and Garen Manufacturing Corp. to facilitate the sale of the Garen property on Highway 12. Attorney Latimer, would you like to give just a little brief on this one, since it's a little more complicated?
Yes, ma'am. Back in 1960, Oktobah County owned the property that the Garen plant on Highway 12 currently sits on. In 1963, that property was conveyed from the county to the city, and the city entered into a contract with Garen. And the contract called for the city to issue $400,000 in industrial revenue bonds. And with the proceeds of those bonds, they would build the factory for Garen, and then they would lease the property back to Garen, and Garen would pay off the bond payments over time. That tracked along until 1985, when there was $70,000 left to be paid off on the bond payments. And the city and Garen amended the lease agreement, and Garen said they wanted to expand and add more employees. So in exchange for that, the city gave Garen a right-to-purchase option. That right-to-purchase option has been ripe and has just been carried over from year to year. The building's been totally paid off by Garen. The right-to-purchase option allows Garen to buy the building and buy the land for $100. In July of this year, they triggered that option to purchase. They presented the plan for the option to purchase before you on the July 18th special call meeting, and this board approved the purchase during that meeting. So all this document does is just from a minute's standpoint and a deed standpoint memorializes that conveyance between the Starkville to Garen.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Walker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Any further discussion? Further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Aye.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Beatty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
The court may as not voting.
Not voting.
Abstain? Yes, sir. Alderman Vaughn.
Okay, by motion, by a vote of five, with one not voting, or abstention, the motion passes. Thank you. Next is consideration of an agreement with government consultants as municipal advisor for the City of Starkville Mississippi General Obligation Revenue Park and Recreation Facilities Bond Series 2019.
Mayor.
Vice, I'm sorry, Alderman Sistrunk.
This is a group that we've used with other bond issuances that we've had. If we were to do any sort of financing with this particular project that is outside a straight 20-year bond arrangement, and there's every likelihood that we will, we will have to do that through the Mississippi Development Bank, and their policy is that they will only work with municipalities that engage consultants, such as this arrangement here. So I move approval.
Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying yea or nay when the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Aye.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Aye.
Alderman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Beatty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, by a vote of four to two, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item up is under planning, discussion, consideration of AA 19-02, request by Dr. Kim regarding an appeal from the decision of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals on University Drive, Mr. Henry Pilkington.
Yes, my name is Simon Kim. I am in charge of Community Development Department. This item seems like really simple, but it is not. It is complicated issues. Board of Adjustment made a decision, but I strongly believe there was a mistake and the relief was negative at the presence, so I made an appeal to. This is the original appeal to the BOAA made by Mr. Pilkington, and it was a direct quote from his application. It says, "Applicant is appealing that determination stated in Dr. Kim's notice to Mr. Pilkington that accessory structure cannot be existing without a main building and also cannot be attached to the non-conforming shed, which is a non-conforming accessory structure." So it was about the interpretation of the code sections. The further, the applicant stated, "The city has already determined the primary structure on the property, the non-conforming accessory shed is an accessory structure legally existing without a main building. This determination establishes that the accessory structure can legally exist without a main building, but the shed is a legally non-conforming structure, which is a grandfather to the code." And another, the issue made by the applicant was, "This interpretation does not actually apply to the pugulas because city's treatment of the primary building or shed as a legal non-conforming structure." The shed is not the primary building on the lot because it is not conducting the principal use of the lot. The lot itself is a residential lot, so principal use of the lot is dwelling rather than shed. So eventually, Mr. Pilkington requested the pugulas be treated similarly to the shed. At their July 11th meeting, BOAA decided after the discussion, the vote is a 7 to 0, and approved the appeal. And the conditions were that if the property sells, the structure and swing shall be removed from the premises, that the applicant not build anything else on the property without going through proper city procedures, that the structure and swing not be required to be inspected by the building department. So on the other hand, with all due respect, the BOAA made a mistake by granting a variance instead of the administrative interpretation of the code. So I believe there is a due process issues there, too. And also through this, it says that the applicant not build anything else on the property without going through the proper city procedures. After this appeal being approved, what is the proper city procedure? That is a question. If they, everybody else actually bring it to the BOAA's decision to build their accessory structures without the main building, such as swimming pools, shed, and containers, how can we review? And also, this, the BOAA approved and directed step not review or inspect the structures existing on the property. So that wasn't actually appropriated at the time. Even if it was a variance case, the case failed to demonstrate any unnecessary hardship of the case. It does not demonstrate the special conditions and circumstances which are peculiar to the land, structure or building embarked, and the same conditions that are applicable to others. Other people are enjoying the same conditions in the code, and they build appropriately. And the literal interpretation of the provisions of the ordinance that deprived the applicant's rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of the ordinance, everybody else has been building properly and enjoy their rights on the property. The special conditions and circumstances that are not resulted from the actions of the applicant. It has been, the conditions of the property has been caused by the actions of the applicant. The fact that the granting of the variance will not comfort on the applicant any special privileges, but if we approve this, we are actually giving them special privileges because other people are actually complying with the code and they are enjoying accordingly. Now, I found that I need to explain legally non-conforming and illegal. I found that some people didn't understand these terms. If, in the graphics, if there was a build without the building permit, that is illegal, and built with the building permit, that is illegal. That is so simple. Now, the time flows, and there is a zoning change that triggers non-conformance. Now, illegal is still illegal, and if there was a legal, but it does not actually meet the new code, then it is legally non-conforming. And if it still meets the code, it's legally conforming. So this is the site, and to become a non-conforming structure after the main building being removed, which means one time it was illegal, and to build a legal structure without a main building, those are the two different things. For example, this shed existed with the main building before the zoning ordinance 2001-4. So this is a legally non-conforming building now. And this one is, according to the applicant, this was built in summer of 2017 without a permit, without a main building. So I'm going to explain the histories. Both existed in 1996, according to the Google Earth, and Mr. Henry Pilkington purchased the property and removed the main residential building in 2003. Now, the existing shed becomes a non-conforming residential building. The use can be changed to more restrictive for non-conforming use, but it cannot be reverted. And through the BOAA and BOAA meeting on April 16th this year, applicant modified the building code officials, and actually, BOAA and the BOAA modified the building code official's decision by determining that the structure was non-conforming, non-residential, with some of the conditions, which was shower and associated plumbing shall be removed, no one-night lodging shall be allowed in the structure, no renters shall be allowed for the structure, and if the property sells, the structure shall be removed from the premises. Now, this shed become a non-conforming structure rather than the main building of the lot. The entire process was done at the request of the applicant. It is amortizing the process, and this shed again became a legally non-conforming structure. The principal use of the lot is residential. Again, this is not a principal building because this is not conducting the principal use of the lot, which is dwelling. So this is non-conforming, the non-residential structure, which is a shed, but it is not the principal use of, principal building on the lot. Other, the structures like pugulas and gobucks, those are all illegally built structures right now. By the way, after issuing the code enforcement letter, we had the internal discussions. The city allowed Mr. Pilkington to use portable, foldable, and storable outdoor furniture and small play equipment such as umbrellas, parcels, benches, tables, screens, and swings, which can be folded and moved to store into the shed structure. That is the sheds for. So how to build illegally? Everybody needs to apply for the building permit and also need to meet the zoning requirements. Building permit is required for the zoning, and it requires every construction project of building or other structures, including accessory structure, need to apply for the building permit. Now, there is exceptions. Exception is include repairs, not changing the character of the structure, and not exceeding $1,000 in cost of painting or war papering issues. If it is identified as an unsafe, then building, the officials can go out there and ask them to upgrade and make it a safe condition. The current use of the property is residential. The applicant has been claiming that the property has been used for residential recreation. There is no such zoning categories as residential recreation, residential, commercial, residential industry, or such, if not mixed use. Now, to change the use of the land from residential to recreational, appropriate review needs to be done, and through this, any non-conforming building structures on the lot shall become conforming. And there is zoning categories as a recreational, which is parks and recreation passive. This passive recreation facility is developed for passive use by the general public. And there is recreation and entertainment, outdoor categories, and this is an open or partially enclosed or screened facility for a fee or admission price. Examples include sporting arenas, amusement parks, zoo, amphitheaters, drive-in theaters, stadiums, athletic field, and clubhouse, water parks, golf courses, shooting archery ranges, swimming pools, and sports complexes. This all need to be reviewed by the community development and approved. Mr. Sharp, who is the attorney for Mr. Pilkington, has confirmed that Mr. Pilkington has used the property for recreational use, which was not going through the proper permits, and it makes the entire use of the property legal rather than conforming. According to the zoning, it is the intent of the zoning that there shall be but one main structure plus any permitted accessory structures. And there is a definition of the accessory structure, and rather than I talking about grammar, this was the issues that the applicant attorney brought up. He said, "The accessory structure is clearly incidental to and customary found in connection with the principal building or the use of the property," which was a good idea, but when you compare with the accessory structure and then a structure or use, that the use means actually the use of the accessory structure rather than the use of the property. And Section 60-2-41 definitions actually confirms accessory structure is located on the same parcel of the property as a principal structure and the use, which is incidental to the use of the principal structure. Now, the location of the accessory structure, this is the most important part here. Zoning states, "No accessory structure shall be erected in any required front or side yard," which means the accessory structure need to be set or installed on the backyard or rear yard. Now, how to define yard is also illustrated in the zoning. It says, "The minimum depth or width of a yard shall consist of the horizontal distance between the lot line and the nearest point of the foundation or of the main building." So without the main building, we cannot actually define which is a rear yard. So how these issues came this far, personally, I really didn't want to deal with these issues. This was all about the shed, and there was no planning review at first. Upon the application, the original building permit for a storage shed, not for a residential building, was issued on January 2nd to replace the siding and shingles. A building inspector found on March 1st that the storage shed claimed by the owner originally was transformed into a tiny house on a slab where the interior was gutted and reconstructed with the bath and kitchen area. More works have been done at the time other than permitted. Building Division began treating it as a residential dwelling and reviewed it accordingly. The owner applied for an administrative appeal at the time and modified the building official's decision by downgrading the non-conforming status from residential building to a non-residential shed on April 16th. On June 3rd, when building official checked one of the pugulas on the site after having inspections of the shed and questioned its structural sustainability, a special attention was, at the time, special attention was paid to the fact if other structures on the property had gone through a permitting process and found them illegal. So planning issues were identified at that point. It started from building division, and now planning was embarked. This is the impact of the BOAA's decision. BOAA might, if not reversed today, leave a precedence of approving illegal structures that had never gone through both zoning review and building permit processes. There is a question, is any illegal structures stayed more than two years? There is a question, any illegal structures state more than two years legally nonconforming? The action went against the city code and will effectively paralyze the enforcement power. Are we going to allow accessory structure on a vacant property that does not have a main building? Are you going to leave any substandard structures without them reviewed and permitted? The BOA's decision should be based on administrative interpretation of the law in this case, but that letter they chose to grant the variance. And there was no demonstrated hardship from the applicant. Examples of accessory structure includes barns, garages, carports, playhouse, shed, private greenhouses, gazebos, storage buildings, boat houses and docks, swimming pools, pump house, and storage containers. The BOA's decision will allow building accessory structure on any vacant properties that do not have a main building until the ownership changes. A new owner can claim the same thing again because there is a fundamental or constitutional fairness issues. This is about the fairness, it's about the fairness with other citizens that enjoy the same amenities while actually meeting the code requirements. The decision will encourage building illegal structures throughout the city. So, staff respectfully and strongly recommend the mayor and the vice mayor and the Board of Alderman reverse the determination of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and uphold the staff's interpretation of the code to remove any illegal structures on the subject property. It's the staff's intention that the property being developed appropriately like others do in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kim. Okay, the applicant is here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to come forward?
Yes.
Okay. Would introduce yourselves, please, to the board?
I'm Henry Pilkington, I'm the property owner.
Okay.
I'm Jason Sharp, attorney of law firm, and I'm here on behalf of the property.
Okay, thank you. Y'all have some presentation you'd like to make?
I do.
Okay. And if you would, if you could use the mic therefore, because if you don't, then we're not hearing you through our system here.
I have this on the power board. Everybody's comfortable.
That's fine.
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Board, thank you for allowing us to come and be heard. I'm going to be brief. This doesn't seem as weighty as annexation or some of the other items that we've talked about tonight, but certainly we appreciate the opportunity to be heard on it. And I'll start by saying, the reason we originally appealed the decision to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals was because we were looking for efficiency and equity, things that we had not found in the process up until this point. With regards to the accessory shed structure, I'm going to skip over a lot of Dr. Kim's analysis because I believe it's inapplicable, and I'll show why it's inapplicable. But a couple of things to point out initially are, the reason we're here is because he sent a letter demanding that Mr. Pilkington remove the pergola from his property and giving him 10 days to do so. And so, that's what prompted our look into the code to see if it was permitted, and our analysis that we'll talk about here. This is not a variance request. I'm not going to talk about a variance request. This is a difference in an interpretation of the code. Dr. Kim interprets it one way, we interpret it a different way for the reasons that I'll discuss. This is not a change of use request. No change has been made to the use of the property the entire time that Mr. Pilkington has owned it. The issue before you is can the applicant have an accessory structure of pergola on his property? The staff decision set forth in the letter was that pergola is an illegal structure, and no accessory structures are permitted without a main building. Nowhere in the code does it say that an accessory structure is not permitted without a main building. You won't find that language in the code. You will find definitions that Dr. Kim is applying to reach his conclusion that one is not permitted, and I'd like to look at those definitions and discuss them. Starting with the definitions of principal building, principal use, and use. We need to look at the use of the property because that's going to be important in our determination of whether or not an accessory structure is permitted. I'm not going to read the definitions to you, you have them there in front of you. I will say that principal use is generally the main use of the land or structures, and use is the purpose for which the land or building or the other structure is designed, arranged, or intended. Like I said before, the use of the property is unchanged throughout Mr. Pilkington's ownership. The property is still residential in use. It is now and has been since his acquisition. He's used it for the type of residential activities that are not dwelling, because he's been told that he would have to improve the structure, the shed, in order to make it suitable for a dwelling. And so, it was approved by this board as a nonconforming shed, not a dwelling. But, his residential use is consistent with, his use of the property is consistent with everyone's residential use of their property. He uses it for the purposes he set forth in the next slide, which has been before this board before, when we were talking about the accessory shed structure. And this is what residential use without a dwelling unit looks like. It's primarily recreational in nature. You can't dwell on the property, you can't stay on the property, but you can use the property for all the normal things that you would use your residential property for. Barbecuing, having friends over, swinging on your swing set, enjoying the shade of your pergola, all things that are consistent with his use for the past 15 years of the The shed and swing and the pergola all support this use. There's no displacement of any conforming use, there's no change in the use. And this use has been emphasized throughout his prior appeals to the boards. The next slide is just talking about his current use, we've discussed that. And so, now that we have established what his use of the property is, let's look at the definition of accessory structure. And I'd like to note here, I'm using the definition of accessory structure from the zoning ordinance. This is in Article 2 definitions. I will point out that Dr. Kim used a definition of accessory structure from 62-2, I'm sorry, 62-41, that's your flood ordinance. We are not here on a flood issue. The zoning ordinance at the beginning in the definition section prescribes that the definitions to be used are those found in the zoning ordinance. So I've chosen to use the zoning ordinance definition. A structure or use that is clearly incidental to and customarily found in connection with a principal building or use. You'll find that there are other parts of that definition, but every time it talks about a principal building, it also talks about a principal use. And in interpreting this, we need to give weight to all of the words in the definition. If it was meant that an accessory structure could only exist in association with a principal building, or use would not be included. Or use means use of the property, or as Dr. Kim would have it mean, use of the accessory building. The use of the pergola satisfies all of these criteria for an accessory structure. It's clearly incidental to and customarily found in connection with a principal building. Go through them all, it satisfies all of them. With regard to a building permit, I want to talk about, again, the genesis of this appeal, our appeal, and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals ruling was that it was reasonable that he did not know to get a building permit when he installed pergola. Like many of you, he went to Lowe's, he got something to put in his yard, and he didn't know he had to have a permit to do it. He's not a builder, there was no builder involved. When he did make changes to the property that required a building permit, clearly, as his builder told him, he applied for one, that's for the shed structure. The reason this is important is because the enforcement of this building permit has been selective on the part of the city staff. During the permitting process for the accessory shed, the city inspected the property multiple times. That started back in January, continued until a final determination to release the stop order was made.
How many times did you say? Inspection?
Well, at least three over a six-month period. Inspectors were on this property. Pergola was in place during all of the appeals related to the accessory structure, the main structure. It's depicted on one of the slides, the next slide, that was before the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, when they considered the main structure. The pergola's been in place for in excess of two years. It wasn't until this board said, "You need to lift your work order and allow him to continue work on his accessory shed," that then it was determined that the pergola was nonconforming and illegal and needed to be removed. And it's our belief that this enforcement action is arbitrary because, as possibly several people in the crowd can note, there are accessory structures similar to the shed, doghouses, treehouses, children's forts, on residential properties throughout the city that did not obtain building permits. The only reason this particular shed, or this particular pergola was asked to obtain a building permit was because city staff was not happy with this board's decision and initiated a demand letter that it be removed. We believe this is an arbitrary departure from the city's normal enforcement policy, your normal permit policy, and we believe that it was done for the purpose of harassing the landowner.
Mayor, may I recognize?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, may I recognize?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the Board of Adjustments and Appeals approve this on at least two different occasions?
Correct.
And am I also correct that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this favorable to the applicant on prior occasion?
Correct.
So, I think the last decision was, I know it was unanimous, the last decision, which included the support of a former building official and former city engineer of the city staff, is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Correct.
And it just seems to me, in listening at this appeal, and at the presentations and all the evidence that has been tendered tonight, that this matter has been very meticulously litigated through the administrative process, and appears that there is substantial evidence to grant the relief that is favorable to the applicant here. You know, this, certainly, I don't want to substitute, Mr. Attorney, you know, in the terms of the law, which is well-established law in the state of Mississippi, and I remember my argument case for life for Mrs. Supreme Court in 1998, Attorney, on administrative law, and I made it clear to the justices, that who were very learned, very intellectual, very scholarly, that I'm not trying to ask them to rewrite the law, just want to apply the limited scope of review. And so, it appears to me, I don't want to give deference, I don't want to substitute my judgment for that of the boards that we have in place. And it seemed like our Board of Adjustments and Appeals have very meticulously litigated this matter on at least two separate occasions, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, whom we have entrusted with these very defined matters, have granted the relief. And so, I just have not hurried any basis tonight to reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals and of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I cannot substitute and remove their judgment and apply mine. I mean, this is how the administrative law process works, and I just think there's credible evidence that is substantially and clearly convincing and place in this. And I'm going to yield at this point, Mayor, for other members of the board, I'm not convinced that the decision of the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and also the prior decision of the Planning and Zoning should be set aside, that it should be reversed. And I'm in favor of affirming the decision of the boards, that, Mr. Attorney, that you sat within, I'm in favor of granting the applicant.
Vice Mayor?
No, sir, I don't want to be interrupted, Mayor. I don't want to be interrupted by anybody while I'm talking. And thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I'm about to conclude. I kind of lose my thought when I get interrupted, but I'm not in favor of granting the relief that's being requested by the appealing party. I think that the boards have done a good job, and I'm going to give deference to their decision, and I think their decision is supported by substantial evidence. And Mayor, I'm going to yield the floor at this time.
Okay, thank you. You have an opportunity for rebuttal, Dr. Kim?
Yes, I just want to clarify one thing. Vice Mayor, your opinion is really strong, and I respect that. One thing I need to clarify is that those issues were only focused on the nonconforming shed before. This is a new case, a new case about illegal structures. So there is two cases, and I would like to address that I am talking about illegal structures rather than the nonconforming shed.
Okay, thank you. I'm afraid that I thought they were concluded, so y'all were not done, and you're certainly welcome to continue making your case, I apologize.
I would just say one more thing, which is with regard to location of the accessory structures. We're residential, we're using the property as residential. The argument is that you can, it has to, because you have to know where the side yard, side yard or the front yard is, you have to have a main building. Well, in a T5 district, there are no setbacks on the sides. There's no way a side yard can be required in T5 districts, so it's inapplicable whether or not there is a front or side yard, because there's not one. Without a main building, there are no yards at all. And so, in reading that section of the code, no accessory structure shall be erected in any required front or side yard, I would say that any means, any required means exactly what it says, those required yards, we don't have any required yards here, so we don't violate that as well. I know that Henry would like to say something. I know it's been a process for him, and so I'll yield any time that I have left to him, if he chooses to speak.
I just want to thank the board for their time, and it has been a long process. This is my sixth official meeting with a board or the Board of Alderman about this issue, and I feel like that I've tried to be a good citizen, tried to be a good property owner, and do what needed to be done. We had our appeal hearing on July 11th, and they did decide seven to zero to let the pergola stand, and I hope you would consider the same decision today. Thank you.
All right, now, Dr. Kim, I apologize, I got that out of order there. If you have something else you'd like to say?
Yes, this is not just about pergolas or swings or anything else, this is about setting the precedence, once we allow this. Next time, if somebody build or move containers on their yard and without a main building, if it is a backyard, we may consider reviewing the site plan and then may approve through the process. But if they just move anything on that property and then claim that this is accessory structure to the yard, to the lot and or to the property, and if they just went for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals case, and if they got approved, and they have to get approved because there is already a precedence through these cases, and if they get approved, then planning and zoning and building goes nowhere, and the community development department actually loses entire enforcement power. So, staff, again, strongly recommend the mayor and So, staff, again, strongly recommend the mayor and the Board of Aldermen reverse the determination of the BOAA and uphold the staff's interpretation of the code.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Board, Alderman Walker.
I have one question. I feel like in one way or the other, this may come to some resolution tonight. But in order to potentially not have you come back before us at some point when football season starts, I do know that this board, in the not-too-distant past, passed an ordinance related to RV parking, related to where it could be on the, you know, it had to be on the side or the rear. We did something along that line. And that's, if I recall, in the past, that's typically what you have done, is pulled an RV in there for tailgating and so forth. So, could you just talk a little bit about the use of the property in that regard? And I want then people to be able to weigh in, so that's factored into the decision making.
Yes, I have had an RV, I sold it last summer, so that's not an issue for that property anymore, which made having the plumbing in that small building a lot more critical.
Okay, that was, it just seems like this is a very, seems like a simple thing. That seems, it's gotten very complicated, and I just knew that that might be one other piece that might complicate the matter. So, with that said, I'm going to ask our city attorney. Can you walk us through a little bit, from a legal perspective, where we think we are in this process and how we got to this point?
I'll start my comments by saying I appreciate the detailed presentation and report of Dr. Kim and the detailed presentation and report of Mr. Sharp and Mr. Pilkington. I will do my best to simplify, and I did that today, taking some notes about this, because it has had a winding course. Here's what happened, based on my understanding. In January of 2019, Mr. Pilkington started working on this shed, and he put in some residential stuff. He put in a shower, a kitchenette, maybe a cot. City inspectors inspected it and said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 you're making this shed residential, and it doesn't meet the city's residential code, so something's got to give." And so, they cited him for it, and they issued a stop work order. So, then discussions incurred between Mr. Pilkington and city staff. Lots of people were involved in those discussions. City planner was, assistant city planner was, Dr. Kim was, I was. We all got together to decide, "How does this applicant have a pathway forward?" And one of the things that was suggested is, "Take out all the residential stuff and get it back to being a shed." And so, we said, "Take out the shower, take out the kitchenette, promise you'll never have overnight occupancy, and promise that if you ever sell the lot, that structure is coming down." Mr. Pilkington said he agreed with that. So, that went before the Board of Adjustment and Appeals in April as a joint proposal. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals quickly ratified that, or approved that with a unanimous vote. And Mr. Pilkington wadded out of the woodshed, he had a zoning problem. He had a potentially non-conforming structure in T-5, so he had to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the big debate there was whether he had modified that shed more than 50 percent. Because if he did, it was going to have to comply with T-5 zoning law. But if he didn't, it could stay a legal, non-conforming use. And the Planning and Zoning Commission made a finding of fact that it didn't exceed 50 percent plus one, so it could remain. Planning and Zoning Commission approved it unanimously. I thought it was over at that point. The city then wrote a letter to Mr. Kim and said, "Oh, by the way, because you converted your shed, that to a shed, and took out the residential stuff, now you can have the pergola." And I don't like to call it a pergola, it's a golf cart carport, that's what it is. And that's where I feel like the city doesn't have totally clean hands, because that was set on the back end rather than the front end. In other words, the city said, "Take out all this stuff, and oh, by the way, now that you did that, the pergola's got to come down." I could see Mr. Pilkington thinking, "Well, maybe I want to go full bore on residential, had I known that on the front end." That's why this matter went back to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The Board of Adjustment and Appeals had every right to hear this the second time around. The law says they adhere administrative interpretations, and they actually step into the shoes of the city planner. They approved this matter unanimously, seven to zero. So, I think this board has a clean legal slate tonight to go either way. But that's exactly what happened in the case, and I wanted y'all to have that complete factual narrative.
Alderman Carver?
I would like to provide a motion, and I'm going to ask you a question that pertains. The motion will be to uphold the Board of Adjustment Appeals' decision. And as it relates to pergola of a golf cart shed, would that be effective in maintaining that it could stay on-site?
It would.
So, then this need to be worded, or request to deny, an appeal by the Community Development Director from the decision from Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
That motion would work to effectuate that purpose.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
I'm sorry, who did the second? Okay, all right, I have a motion and a second. Hang on, as we were headed that direction, give me just a second.
Yeah, take your time, and I'd like to read it again after you pin it, or you write it.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, if you would please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name, and we'll start down at the Ward 7 end.
There you go. Read the motion. Read the motion.
I'm sorry, the motion was to uphold...
It can be worded either way, but his wording was, "Motion to deny the appeal by Dr. Kim of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals approval of the golf cart carport or pergola."
That, did you get that?
Yea.
Okay, all right.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Nay.
Alderman Sisdrunk?
Nay.
Alderman Carver?
Yea.
All right, my vote of four to two, motion carries. All right, do you want to press on?
I could take two minutes.
A break, and I can't. We'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
I need a fourth. Yep, I got the left side, I need the lung numbers, I need that. I think it's Lisa's fault, she got nabs in them and now they're...
Oh, their nabs back there?
Okay, did we not?
So that's going to be with typical conditions with insurance?
Within 20 days of the event, they're making motions, just tag that.
So what do we say exactly?
Insurance.
All right, thank you. There's my floor. Thanks, sir. All right, we are back in session. The next item on the agenda is...
Move approval?
Okay, it would be a special event for Mothers Against Domestic Disputes. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Carver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Walker.
May I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Alderman Carver, I would just recommend you tag in that motion to say that the approval is conditioned upon the applicant presenting insurance consistent with the special events policy at least 20 days out from the event.
Okay.
All right, and you're acceptable, accepting that, Alderman?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to ask the public if anybody, I'm going to roll through these pretty quick, and I know from the partnership we've got, where I'm representative, do you want to speak, or is anybody here that's... Would want to... okay.
Okay. Next special event request is the partnership to hold a Sturgis Bike Rally.
They've got insurance.
They've got insurance. Okay. Do I have a motion for the Sturgis Bike Rally? Alderman Carver, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay.
It's fine.
Second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four oh. Okay. Special event for the, what is that?
Same move. Same move.
Okay. Motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second?
Second.
Sistrunk, further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four oh. Special event for KMG Creations.
Same move, and I'll say this, I came out to the last one, and got out there and did the electric slide, and the dance, and the park, and I had a wonderful, wonderful turnout. It was my first time to go, and my apologies for that, but we'll probably forevermore go, and my kids want to go, and appreciate all that you do above and beyond what you have to, and that was a really good time, so.
That dancing in the park?
It was awesome.
Okay.
It was, it was a good time.
Okay, so was that a motion for the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that with the insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Tag it with the insurance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Sistrunk, further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Four to zero, motion carries. I took good notes. You're welcome. All right, next item is consideration of variance request VA 19-10. Request by Andy Fornay for variance from front setback requirements. Ms. Corbin, you have this one?
This is the variance request by Andy Fornay for relief from front setback requirements for proposed 79 lot subdivision in a R3A zoning district. The applicant is requesting a reduced to minimum front setback to bring the front of the homes closer to the street, and to create a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape, and to allow for a covered porch to extend out beyond the front facade of the house and front-loaded garage. This image shows what would be allowed by code if they were not to get the variance, and it just shows the porches that are behind the rear setback in alignment with the front-loaded garages. And this is an image that shows what they're proposing and asking for variances, so it pulls the porches forward in front of the front facade, and the garage is recessed a little bit. Forty-three property hunters of record were notified directly by mail of this request. A public hearing notice was published in the Starville Daily News on June 22, 2019, and a sign was posted on the property concurrent with publication of the notice. As of this date, the planning office has received no phone calls about this request, and one in-office visit requesting information. On July 24, 2019, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals recommended approval of the request unanimously.
Mayor Mayor recognize.
Vice Mayor?
First of all, let me ask for a procedural matter. I thought we were still on break, but you can just tell me where we are on the agenda, please.
We're at item F.
So during the break, you took up items A, B, C, D, and E, so you had item F?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Corbin, let me kind of refocus, I see what we're going on, because I thought we were still on break. You know, the vice mayor would have liked some notice before we reconvene, and so was the other colleague from seven, and the clerk. So you asked for a variance request, and what was the recommendation of the committee?
So it was unanimous verdict, it was five to zero, they all recommended the variance request.
Yeah, I give deference to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. The applicant here, would you come forward, please, sir? Anything you would like to share with the board?
Just a few more points. Thank you so much for your time, and letting us be here to talk about this variance request. My name's Henry Minor, I'm a landscape architect with Kimley Horne, representing the developer, Andy Fornay. Emily did a great job explaining, you know, kind of the nuts and bolts of this variance request. Essentially, what it boils down to is, this variance request is really important to us to be able to create the neighborhood and the environment that we've been talking about all along through this process. A walkable neighborhood, a neighborhood where, you know, we foster that sense of community, where people interact regularly, and, you know, where kids have a great place to play in their backyard. And so, the reason this variance is so important to being able to achieve those, and I'd like to point to this exhibit, is by being able to bring the building and the front porch closer to the sidewalk there on the public street, we are able to create that big backyard space where kids can play. And at the same time, we're able to have a really nice, deep front porch that is about 15 feet off the public sidewalk, so that as people are walking or biking by, they stop and say hello to their neighbors. We also have, the other reason this is really important is because, the same reason that Emily talked about how the porch can be in front of the garage, all of a sudden, the porch is really the more visual focal point, visual interest point on the street, rather than the garage, it really helps mask that. And then thirdly, one of the concerns that the neighbors had during the process of going through, you know, getting this project to where it is today, was wanting to make sure that there was variety in the homes, and how they looked. The architect who we're working with, onsite design Mike Hoxton, you know, really stressed the fact that this 10 feet, while it may seem minimal, it really gives him a lot more ability to vary the floor plans, vary the front facade, and really help us create that rich architectural, you know, style that we're trying to achieve, and really create that unique sense of place. So I think that sums up pretty much the main reasons we're wanting this, but we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have a question, Mr. Minor. In pulling these forward, are you increasing the amount of impervious surface? Are you having more backyard? Is, what is that doing? Is it changing the footprint?
So basically, what it's allowing us to do is to take a portion of the footprint that would be there anyway, and position it in front of the garage. And so, there is some gain of green space in the back, while there is a little bit of an increase of impervious in the front. So it offsets.
Okay, so you're not increasing the impervious surface?
The net, that's correct.
The net, okay, all right. So that was kind of my question.
Oh. I'm not, can I try one more shot?
No, no, it's not so hard.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to get an understanding, so you have a little more backyard there. Okay, in this process, I mean, you've seen us be very concerned about stormwater, and stormwater was a major discussion point when y'all were here. Did y'all look at any level, increased level at all? We have two and 10. Did you look at maybe 25 or 50 capturing that stormwater as you were studying and planning for this project?
So during the, to this point, the way that we have laid out the neighborhood, and laid out the retention pond in the southwest corner of the property, was to meet the standard, meet the 10-year ordinance. What we're now doing is we're going through and fine-tuning that design, and we'll be submitting infrastructure plans to engineering, hopefully in the next two to three weeks. And so, at that point, I think that's where we'll really be able to flush out the design, and be able to explore some of those things. We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
But there is a chance perhaps y'all could increase that detention a little bit to maybe mitigate some of the impact?
Without significantly modifying the design, we will not be able to increase the storage to meet the new ordinance.
Well, no, that wasn't what I was asking. I just wondered, even some measure of acknowledgement of the increased impervious surface, I thought maybe you might be able to go a little deeper, perhaps, anyway.
Sure, and so I understand. So our, the engineer, Richard Engineering, has indicated that the pond, as it is designed today, it definitely meets the 10, and he feels like there is already some additional capacity in there. We are not at the point to be able to say exactly how much, but we will be during the process of fine-tuning the infrastructure.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty, I'm sorry.
Mr. Minor, full disclosure, I know Mr. Minor from a former days in Newton.
Yes, sir.
Married to one of my best friend's daughter, and... We have, as we approach this stormwater mitigation ordinance change that is going to take us, I think, if we approve, to 100-year stormwater mitigation for new developments, we're doing that because it's being requested of us, and recommended by our engineer, our city engineer. Also, because we're starting to have some water issues, and we've had water issues in the south part of Starville, and we're concerned that if we don't... If we don't start to address this in a serious way, that as development takes place, and South Starville is really where the develop, develops taking place, as we take 20 to 25 acres, we turn it from grass and trees, and, you know, vegetation into all concrete or buildings or something, that if we get one of these big events, like I can remember the last 15 years or so, like Hurricane Katrina, or a rain, we got, you know, somewhere in along that time, where we got seven, eight inches of rain in a 24-hour period, that some of these 10-year retention ponds would be compromised, and we're going to turn waterloose going down a creek or downstream into some neighborhood below us, that's going to put water in a neighborhood, possibly in somebody's, in houses, new houses, you know, expensive houses, that kind of thing. And so, that's where I would be concerned, or to, and request that if you folks could meet us halfway between that 10-year and 100-year, something, I'd say 50-year mitigation, something. I mean, I understood from Edward Kim, our city engineer, that because of economies of scale, when you go up, you can go up from 10 to 20 to 50, whatever, without doubling or tripling or quadrupling whatever the size of the retention pond. And it would be real important to us, and I think it would be a big thing for City of Starville, and for that part of town, and this is going to be a beautiful development, gosh, this is first class. But if y'all could find some way to help us, kind of meet us halfway, you know, on this. We want to accommodate you in the improvements, and the access to the zoning, or whatever, but at the same time, hopefully, y'all can help us in trying to come up with a way for us to further mitigate what could, and that would be a really big issue for us, from a water, from an oil standpoint.
Understood. At this time, I can't, you know, commit to a certain storm event without knowing, going through the engineering and physically knowing what can be done, but I can say we're willing to work with the city, you know, on this matter.
Thank you. Any other questions?
May I move approval?
A motion from Alderman Walker for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carver. Further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, it's unanimous. All right, next item up is the annexation that was moved from earlier business, and that is the consideration of approving the ordinance enlarging, extending, and defining the corporate limits and boundaries of the city of Starville.
And now that it's the appropriate time, I'm moving.
Now you may make your motion. All right, Alderman Sistrunk, you move to, okay, move forward with that. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Beatty. Further discussion. Alderman Walker.
This is, there's been lots of discussion over the last however many public hearings, and all the times in between about annexation, and how, too big, too small, what are you doing, why are we making this decision? And I would say, I think the vice mayor brought up a lot of really good points today, one of which is, you know, how would you feel if that was your area being annexed? I think that's an excellent question. I think Alderman Sistrunk brought up the point that annexation, when it happens all over the place, in Mississippi and other places, there's always constituents that don't want that to happen. And so, that's typically how this thing works, and I certainly understand that. I didn't campaign on annexation. That's one of those things, and that's okay. Other people did, and I don't know that that's, don't say that that's a good or a bad thing. I would say that that's the issue that's been brought before this board, and there's a decision that has to be made. And so, with that, what I'm forced to look at is, yes, is it going to potentially provide short-term issues for the constituents that don't want to be brought in? Sure, I believe that that is very well the case. So I have to try to understand that piece of it, but I also believe that the role of me sitting here is, have to evaluate what is the long-term trajectory of this decision for the city of Starville. And while I agree that where we started out with annexation for a much larger area, probably would not be in the best interest of the city of Starville in the short term. Looking at the map of where we are now, the Highway 182 corridor, getting that piece and the part of the bypass, and having that connection up on the east side of the university, I have come to the conclusion, and I have thought a lot about it, and I've talked to lots of different people about it, about what this decision might mean. And my decision is that I do believe that having control over those entrances, and those primary highways into the city of Starville is in the long-term best interest of the city. I would also say that I don't know that when or if another annexation is going to happen. But I would also say that if you live in those areas that are immediately east of the university, it's probably a pretty good chance that at some point in the future, that is going to be considered to be in the city of Starville. When or if, I don't know, but I think that's probably long-term growth. The growth is likely to occur to the east, and I believe controlling that, the rest of that bypass to that interchange, and controlling the 182 corridor is absolutely in the best interest of the city of Starville. And that's how I'll be making my decision tonight.
All right, thank you. Any further, Alderman Carver?
I'll say that this was not an issue that was brought before the board, before the board, but that the board brought this issue to the table. Often, we talk about time-sensitive issues, this is not a time-sensitive issue. This is something that's going to have repercussions in the litigation side, that's going to cost a lot of money, a lot of lawsuits, a lot of heartache, a lot of divisiveness within the community. And at the end of the day, I'm not sure we're going to win the next round. I think it would be wise to finish all of our 1998 annexed areas, provide services to the citizens that have been paying taxes for the past 21 years, we owe that to them. Never forget those people if we move forward tonight with this. Don't do anything in the new annexed area until you take care of the people that have been paying taxes for 21 years. You know, just become more aware of, quality of life does not always have to pertain to being inside the city limits of your municipality, it can be just outside. That's what sprawl, or anybody that decides to locate outside of a city limit in the United States, that's not something, that's not a fault of theirs, that's not something you must always capture them and grow this municipality, because they enjoy the services without living inside the city limits. If that was a valid argument, I would say steel plantation would need to be brought in. I would say, things in my side of town, west side of town, there's a lot of neighborhoods out just past Walmart that we discussed, and this was an obvious attraction to the east side of the state with Mississippi State University, east side of the city with Mississippi State University being there. I just think the timing's off. I'm surprised it made it this far down after being whittled away and whittled away, but I will not be supporting this, obviously, tonight. But I wish our department heads the best of luck, there's going to be some more immediate hires, if I had to guess, is what it's going to take to fully staff those departments. They've already got, I would say, police department understaffed, they're going to have to have more officers for the protection to provide these individuals and these people in these areas. I would just hope from a divisiveness standpoint that, you know, everybody gets along and works together, and moves forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, I do want to say one thing, as it relates to the 1998 annexation. From the time that we collected taxes from those folks, they have been receiving the services that taxes provide, which is fire, police, the funds, the things that have not been provided are areas that are financially impractical, and that is sewer, but they don't pay for something they don't get. So we are not charging for sewer, we are not charging for anything that they are not currently getting. So they got taxes, they got the city services that are associated with those things, including being able to vote, including being able to come into the city and have a voice, and have administration, all the normal general government attributes they got with their taxes, and that's just the case immediately, so.
I want to add one more comment, and that's just that, can I do that?
Well, my mouth was half open, but that's okay.
Go ahead.
No, it's all right, go ahead. I'm like the vice mayor, I lost my train of thought there.
Well, you know, and a side note, it's just for the county services, really brought to light of, just to congratulate, you know, just to recognize them, because individuals, really, the police and fire protection in the county must be of good quality, because everybody here that spoke up, regardless of their side of the issue, tended to compliment the county services. So just for those guys and ladies out there that are doing their jobs, and especially as a volunteer, my hat's off to them, so.
Absolutely. County services are wonderful, they are, and so are our city services, and there's more of them, so. All right, anything further? All right, seeing nothing, we will take a vote, and it'll be a roll call vote, so the city clerk, if you would answer, yea or nays, the city clerk calls your name. Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Sorry. Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right, the vote is tied, three to three. I vote in favor of the annexation, so, motion carries. Next item, next item on the agenda is the finance administration, which is the claim stocking. Do I have a motion? Is that...
Yes, that was me.
Alderman Walker, I have a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk, all those in discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Or your name? I'm sorry?
Nay.
Yeah, okay. Vote of four to two, motion carries. All right, and that takes us to a closed determination session. Do I have a motion to go into closed determination? Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, that'd be vote of five to nine, Alderman, vice mayor did not wrong.
Just an executive session.
Yes. All right, so, if everyone clear the room, please? All right, thank you all. The board has voted to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation related to law enforcement officer training program, and potential litigation related to the drainage issues in Country Club Estate Development. If you would please clear the room. Only Mr. Latimer can read because it's his handwriting.
The board moved to authorize the mayor to issue a stop work order to ongoing infrastructure development in country club estates, including all current and future phases, to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the community related to the drainage and infrastructure problems in the area, both upstream and downstream, until the developer adheres to the recommended remedies outlined in the River Cent Science LLC report dated July 22, 2019, to the satisfaction of the city engineer or until the Board of Alderman otherwise lifts the stop work order.
Thank you. And that aside from language calling for a work session, in accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code Anticipated 2540-113, the board will be having a budget work session, I'm sorry, a work session on the 16th of August 2019 at 1:15 PM. That meeting will be held in Seehall in the second floor conference room, located at 110 West Main. Public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided within one hour of this meeting. The notice of the work session should be made part of the minutes, and it will be an open public meeting. The city of Starville, public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to recess?
Little group.
Alderman Walker, second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty, all those in favor? All right, thank you all, we're in recess.